Today, we acknowledge that this event is taking place on the traditional territory of the indigenous peoples of Turtle Island, including the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, the Haudenosaunee, and the A'jibwee peoples, and on lands connected with the Lake Simcoe-Nautuasau Treaty of 1818. This is the home of a diverse range of indigenous peoples whom we recognize as contemporary stewards of the land and vital contributors of our society. We have had regrets from Deputy Mayor Hall. He will not be able to join us tonight, and Counselor Jeffrey may have to field an important call during the meeting, so Counselor Jeffrey, feel free to do that. First up will be the adoption of the agenda, and it is moved by Counselor McLeod and seconded by Counselor Comey. That the content of the strategic initiative Standing Committee Agenda for July 8, 2020 be adopted as amended. And the amendments include Item 5.7 Ethnic Mosaic Alliance, read letter of interest to support multicultural center in Collingwood. Item 6.6 Update and Guidance for COVID-19 Response for Parks. CAO Skinner and Executive Director, or sorry, Acting Director of PRC, Mal Malavich. And Item 6.7 Lobbyist Registry Update, Accountability Officer McCauley. And Resolution and Attachment Added for 6.6 Update and Guidance for COVID-19 Response for Parks. Are there any questions or concerns, Counsel? Seeing none, I will call the vote, all in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Declarations of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof, anyone have a declaration of pecuniary interest today? Seeing none, if you find yourself in the spot, or your pet, let us know and indicate the general nature thereof. Item 4 Staff Reports. 4.1 T-2020-9 Development Charge Interest Policy. And I think, who will be handling that, CAO Skinner, will that be Marjorie?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, that will be Marjorie, will provide an overview of that item and several items following it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's the retiring treasurer's role tonight.
Got a busy night, Marjorie.
Yeah. Okay, so through you, Your Worship. The Development Charge Interest Policy, it's a report that the purpose of it is to provide counsel with information related to significant changes to the Development Charges Act under Bills 108 and 138. These major changes are intended to encourage increased housing development, affordability, and predictability throughout the province. Both of these changes will have a negative impact on the cash flow of development charge collections. The first major change relates to the timing of collection for rental housing, institutional development, and nonprofit housing development. So these developments are allowed to defer payment of the DCs over six years, the rental and institutional developments, and 21 years for nonprofit housing. The legislation does allow the municipality to charge interest on the outstanding amount of development charges from the date they would have been payable until paid in full. Second major change is in relation to the timing of the calculation of the development charges themselves. Development charges will be frozen for a two-year period at either date of an application for site plan control, or in the absence of the application, the date of a zoning bylaw amendment, or if neither of those two items occurs, it'll be done as it is now at the issuance of a building permit. So the development charge rate is frozen at the time of application for a period of two years, after which, if the developer has not pulled a building permit, it will go back to the building permit issuance itself. And again, this part of the legislation does allow the municipality to charge interest on the outstanding amount of DCs from the date they would have been payable until the DCs are paid in full. And there are several municipalities so far in Simcoe County that, including the county, that have implemented these interest policies. The reason I wanted to get it done and get it done rather quickly is the fact that we have already received building permit requests for two rental developments in town that we're going to have to get ready to enter into the, when they get their full occupancy or wherever they'll be there. So we have, I did review several interest policies, and in effect, what I'm doing is I'm just recommending that the town is consistent with Simcoe County's interest rate calculation. It's just one calculation that we would do for ourselves and for the county at the same time, because we'll be in charge of collecting that interest as well. And basically, the county has just defined it, it's rather easy, but it's defined to be the rate equal to the published bank prime rate on that day plus 3%. And it's only through the charging of this interest on these DCs that we can in any way, shape, or form mitigate any of the negative impacts. Those factors, lost revenue due to the changes in calculation and timing of calculation. The freezing of development charges for a two-year period, for instance, allows a developer to skip over to potentially to indexations of the fees during that two-year period. Cash flow deficits to pay for infrastructure, because we have to have the infrastructure in place before any development can occur. And also, these agreements that require signing by both parties, we would have to track them manually, ensure that we invoice them, and report them in the correct way, so there would be some staff time involved as a negative impact on this. But other than that, the policy is basically is very similar to the one that the county had prepared. And it's, again, as I say, it follows the framework that the other municipalities in Simcoe County have been using. Be it, Your Worship.
Seeing none, I have a question, Marjorie. If you could just explain for us and for the public the difference between the frozen DCs and the phased-in DCs, and how that's going to impact us.
Through you, Your Worship, the phased-in development charges are the fact that on, for the rental properties, we have two rental buildings that have come in that they would probably have potential development charges of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And instead of getting all of that money upfront to provide the servicing to the lots that are the properties they're being built on, we will collect that over six years. But I do have the right to charge interest on the outstanding amounts each year as they go. So I'd be getting that over six years. If it's a nonprofit housing development, it would be coming in over 21 years. And in terms of the frozen, it's a maximum of two years. So we would, in either case, we would be losing the indexation of the development charges themselves, because once we have the, it's actually at the occupancy date for the rental properties, that freezes it at that time, and when we come in and get a site plan approval, it freezes your development charges at that date, so you would have two years that you wouldn't have the indexation. And I have no idea at this point in time which way interest rates are going to go, or which way inflation is going to go. That it could be more beneficial to continue to charge the interest rate at this prime plus three, as opposed to just the indexation of the things that are going through.
Thank you, Marjorie. Counselor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our Treasurer. You mentioned we could experience cash flow deficits as a result of having to front-end our infrastructure before we get the development charge payments in. I know your next reports deal in part with increasing our debt loads. Do you anticipate this also to affect our ongoing debt situation as well?
Through you, Your Worship, at this point in time, if we're required to borrow for development charge projects, the payments will be made through the development charge reserve or the development charge collections as they come in. There may be points in time where we're not collecting higher development charges in sufficient amounts to cover the debenture payments. But when we're talking about development charges, and we have nine different separate reserve funds within there, we have water, we have wastewater parks, and so on, and the vast majority of those will still exist even with the final changes that they're proposing to Bill 138. So as long as overall, our entire development charge reserve funds don't go into a negative position, we can still borrow back and forth within the, the water could lend the roads the extra that they need, or whatever, to make sure that we cover those debenture payments all within the DC funds.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one further question. That is, have you had any discussions with our developers? Are they finding prime plus three, it might be worth going to their bank and get, could they get a lower interest rate?
Through you, Your Worship, that's, it's entirely possible in today's, in today's situation that they could go to the bank and get a lower interest rate. It's, and this is actually their decision.
Yeah.
If they want to do this or not, if they want to defer it, there, if they want to defer it, I have no choice. If they don't want to defer it, they can carry on and pay it all upfront. It just, it, it will be one of those calculations that is done by at building department or site plan approval, so by having just to, by having to source one interest rate, I thought it would be easier, which is why I stuck with what the county had.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Clerk has kindly reminded me that this is an SIC meeting, so we need to go out to the public. So looking to the Clerk, Sarah, are there any of our audience that have questions on this report?
Through you, Your Worship, to anybody that is watching, if you are interested in participating with regards to the delegation process for a standing committee, raise your hand in the attendee feature within the Zoom meeting, or enter your request in the chat. And right now, it does not look like our attendees wish to speak to this matter.
Okay, if there's no other questions from Council, then I will put the motion on the table. And it is moved by Counselor McLeod and seconded by Counselor Comey. That Staff Report T-2020-9 Development Charge Interest Policy be received, and it's the Development Charge Interest Policy attached as Appendix A be adopted by Council. So I will call the vote, all in favor. And that is carried unanimously. And that takes us to Item 4.2 T-2020-10 Statement of Reserves and Reserve Funds. Pass it back to you, Marjorie.
Thank you, Worship. So this year, I've added, we added a French section. Sonya thought it would probably be a little more background for council when we start getting into budget discussions later on in the year. So I have provided a short refresher on why we have reserves and the distinctions between the types of reserves available. So basically, in short, reserves and reserve funds are critical components of our financial plan, because they allow the town to accumulate funds for future or contingent liabilities. They help absorb unexpected shifts in revenues and expenditures. They fund one-time expenditure requirements, and they assist in minimizing impacts due to fluctuations in the various tax revenues that we may have. In terms of what is a reserve, it's an allocation of the accumulated net revenue. And it's not associated with a specific asset. They're usually used in the operating fund to support or supplement activities normally funded through general revenues. And a couple of examples of those are things like, and I did say they're specifically, or mostly used for operating, but we do have a capital contingency fund. And we have an operating contingency reserve. So if there is something in the capital that goes overboard, we do have some money in the contingency for capital expenditures. If we have a problem with the operating amounts, we would have operating contingency to cover some of those. So we take a look at reserve funds. There are monies that are set aside either by municipal bylaw or as a requirement of the federal or provincial legislation to meet a specific purpose. And the funds can only be used for that purpose. So the main distinction that we have between a reserve and a reserve fund is that a reserve fund itself is an active investment vehicle that earns interest and builds up to a level that allows the specific project that the fund was established for to be completed. We have a reserve fund for municipal parking, and one of the outcomes of that is possibly a parking structure. So as we go along and we put the excess parking revenues in that reserve annually, we're saving up to buy the the land or the infrastructure that we need for that. So we have, reserves are then further segregated into obligatory reserve funds, which are related to the grant funds that we receive or fees that are collected based on legislation. The two best examples of those are the federal gas tax and development charges. They have specific uses and specific requirements for them. The second type of reserve funds are the discretionary reserve funds. And they're established based on council direction to finance future expenditures for which the town has the authority to spend money on, or to provide for a specific contingent liability. For instance, we could be, we have a contingent liability on our financial statements in relation to Collingwood Terminals was set up last year. We could be putting money into a terminals reserve to mitigate that contingent liability that we will have in the future. But in particular, when you look at it, we have the life cycle replacement reserve fund. We have the water reserve fund and the wastewater reserve fund, which are probably the best examples of that, because we use a life cycle to cover our asset management requirements for vehicles, buildings, and roads, and basically for anything that's non-water or wastewater related. The water and wastewater reserve funds fund their own capital and operating expenditures as needed. So we took a look at the balances this year. Our reserve, our reserve balances decreased by about $414,000 from $6.5 million to $6.12 million. And if we take out the reserves that we hold in trust for the library and the BIA, the balance of reserves under council control is $5.76 million, or a decrease of $501,775. The reason for the decrease, you will get to it later in the fourth quarter variance analysis. However, the reason for the decrease is we didn't have a surplus this year. So we couldn't top up the items like our contingent capital contingency reserve and our general reserve. And we had to withdraw $232,666 from the operating contingency to bring our operating account, operating fund to zero, to balance that budget. The obligatory reserves, these funds increased $2.5 million to $6 million, with our federal gas tax accounting for the majority of that increase. And the reason is that we got the top up of, we got double the amount of federal gas tax, thanks to FCM last year. And we do have $2.6 million of those funds committed in the 2020 budget, so we're not, we have certain timeframes that we have to spend the money. We have quotas that we have to meet. In terms of the federal gas tax, we have to make sure that we have it all spent within five years. So my oldest deposit has to be fully spent, but in five years. The discretionary reserve funds, they actually increased $2.7 million to a balance of $58 million. Now, the 2020 budget has committed $11.8 million in capital spending, strictly from the life cycle, the water, and the wastewater reserve funds. When I say it's sitting at $58 million, we have $17.6 million of that, which is in the the asset sale proceed fund. So really, I shouldn't, I shouldn't mention it, but it is there, so just to let everybody know when we see our audited financial statements in September, that it will, the number will be that $58 million. Then I took a look at this in terms of adequacy, based on the reserve and the reserve fund management policy. And involved with the other organizations that were involved with, that provide statistics on it, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And in all cases, in what they have said, that we are still within the accepted ranges. In some cases, we're starting to hit the lower one-third. But if we looked strictly at that statistic, we would be in, probably in the mid-range for that. However, if we take a longer-term view, we really are underfunded, particularly in the asset management area. And we have been basing our target balances on a particularly short-term perspective. We are getting to the point where our asset management plans are getting much more refined. This year, the last big piece of core assets is the stormwater management. Those have all been inventoried now. We're waiting on the condition assessments to get those into the asset management plan, which will then provide us with what we, what we truly have as an infrastructure gap. And I'm hoping that we can get that to Council before the end of the year, and then we will have some more realistic or more tangible targets to allow Council to make the decisions as to how we're going to fund that in the future. When we take a look at those reserves, the one big gap that we do have is that the working capital reserve fund has been fully exhausted. And what we do have in the budget is an annual funding for that reserve of $50,000. So it's target balance is $2.5 million. So at the $50,000 rate, that's going to take us about 50 years to rebuild to where we should be. Now, again, that that depends on what type of year-end surpluses there are, because the working capital reserve fund does factor into the surplus allocation policy that we have. Life cycle funding is really where we fund the asset management requirements for everything except water and wastewater requirements. And what we should have been doing is sticking strictly to looking at the hard services and/or the core services, but the amount of money that we have in life cycle is used for everything. It's used for buildings, it's used for vehicles, it's used for things that are falling apart and we have to fix. So we have budgeted $4.9 million to withdraw from that reserve during 2020. And there's, we have an additional requirement for about $2.6 million for emergency repairs to the Minnesota Storm Sewer. So you will find later, again, in another report, but also at budget time, that staff will be recommending that the 2021 budget deliberations consider an increase in the capital levy from the 0.75% to the 2%, which will go into the special capital levy amounts that is to be used for future asset refurbishment or replacement.
Thank you, Marjorie. And before I put this on the floor for Council, I will look to Clerk Thomas to see if there's anyone in the gallery that would like to comment or ask a question on this.
Again, anybody that is in the gallery wishing to speak to this matter, if they can either raise their hand or enter in the chat that you would like to speak. And there's no interest to speak to this item at this time.
All right, thank you, Sarah. So I'll put the motion on the floor and then take questions from Council. So it's moved by Counselor Comey and seconded by Counselor Madigan. Staff Report T-2020-10 Statement of Reserves and Reserve Funds be received for information purposes. Counsel, are there any questions or comments before I call the vote? Counselor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mayor Saunders. And I know for about a year and a half or so, we've been waiting for the information we need to assess whether or not we need to adjust the automatic or procedural allocation of the surplus automatically to life cycle. And I guess my question will be through to the Treasurer, do we have enough information to be looking at that bylaw to change that? Or just to review it?
Marjorie?
Through you, Your Worship. Counselor Jeffrey, I would suggest that this year and last year for the town of Collingwood are probably two very unique years. We did have, and you will see later, that we did have supplementary taxes, but because of the higher expenditures than we planned, we didn't have a surplus. We could look at it in those terms over the past four or five years, but when we go forward into 2020, the province has postponed the 2020 reassessment. So when we go into 2021 budget period, we're still going to be working with the same assessments that we have in 2020. The only true amount that we will have there are the new assessments that are coming on. It won't be anything to do with any type of an increase in the assessment values overall. It would actually be a true growth. And at this point in time, I was looking at it, we checked it today. Our growth is about 1.3%, which is approximately half to slightly less than half of where we had been over the last two or three years. So I I would suggest that that may be something to look at in 2021.
So, Counsel Jeffrey?
Yes, and just one other question, please, through you, Mr. Mayor. So if FCM is successful in getting, when we're successful in getting the feds in advancing municipalities, the emergency operating funds, is that going to assist us in any way, in terms of, well, I guess, in terms of being able to have a little more room in terms of the working capital reserve?
Through you, Your Worship. If FCM is, like, when I, when I did the forecast, saw that I forecasted a deficit for 2020, right, based on the information at that point in time. As things go on and as we have to, as we have to open up As things go on and as we have to, as we have to open up. More facilities, washrooms, for instance, and the extra cleaning that we're going to have, the, the parking and those types of things. The expenses are coming along a little bit more. And in terms also as well of the bus, we're still not charging fares. So what that funding should do, should allow us some room in certain areas. That we can continue to make our transfers to the life cycle reserve. And those other funds that are there.
That's great, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Counselor McLeod?
Thank you through your worship to, to the treasurer, thank you for that report. And I know you're, this is two down a quarter ago. You did mention in the, in this report, and I think this kind of relates to the variance report that we're going to get in a minute or two. But I'm trying to get it clear in my head, when you say we didn't have a surplus. That's because we aren't allowed to run a deficit and we had to use all of our supplementary taxes. Plus a chunk out of our working capital reserve in order to get to zero, is that correct?
Through you, your worship, yes, that is correct. It was, it was not just the supplementary taxes. There were, as you will see, there were savings throughout the various departments. But we didn't really have any experience with funding a judicial inquiry. Not sure many municipalities did. So when the prior CAO and I were looking at it, we thought, well, this is a nice round number. But apparently it wasn't round enough. So we had to take. And in order to preserve the asset sale funds, we had to take the money from wherever we could to, to make our budget come to zero.
Follow-up through you, your worship. May I know the number of, that is connected to supplementary taxes for the year twenty nineteen, please?
We had one million fifty-seven thou, one million fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-two in net supplementary tax revenues.
So if I'm looking at a different report, sorry, through you, your worship. I'm looking through another report and I see tax-related revenues were over budget by one thou, one million fifty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four. That's not the same number as, as what you just said, or is, is it?
Through, through you, your worship. Yes, there were a couple of other items that are tax, that, that fit in with tax-related. One of them is heads and beds, and it was a little higher this year. We have PILs that come in that were just a little higher than, than budgeted. Because the assessed values had changed. This year, we did the budget prior to having the certified role. So when, when you do the calculations, it kind of changes things a bit.
Right, so just to clarify, the supplementary taxes was one million fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand?
Yep.
Okay, and, and change, whatever.
And change, one million fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-two, some of that might have also been extra interest earned.
Thank you, that's, that's a piece of information I won't have to ask for, thank you very much, your worship.
Welcome. Any other questions, counsel? Counselor Comey?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the treasurer, thank you for your thorough reports and presentations. That wonderful gas tax funding, I believe you said it, so it was being committed, is that what you said?
Through, through you, worship, some of it has been committed with this. It's, it's, we have some work to do on mountain road. We have work to do on. Lockhart and Huron, Ontario, that we will be using. Yeah, the, the widenings, because it, it is essentially easier for the greenhouse. Gas calculations that we can, we can use turning lanes, road widenings. When we go to do mountain road, I believe we're going to make it a five, five-lane road. So because it's four in some spots, we can only claim one lane against it. The other spots that are two, we can claim the, the full amounts with that. That's where we have it kind of committed in, in those sorts of areas. It'll be mostly in the next couple of years, mountain road, because we have, we have grant money that. We can use with that as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Counsel, any other questions before I call the vote? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Marjorie. So next, we have. T twenty twenty dash twelve, update, update on debt.
Thank you, worship. Since the adoption of the debt management policy, which provided target debt servicing cost. The, the town has, has made significant progress towards those targets. Actually, today when I was looking at my, my notes for, for tonight. I went back to the original report, so I can reference some of those numbers in there. So we did arrive at tax-supported debt servicing costs as a percentage of own-source revenues as a, a target of seven percent. And the water rate-supported debt and wastewater rate-supported debt both have seven percent. As their percent of respective own-source revenues as the debt servicing target. In terms of external debt, when we began preparing debt-related reports for the twenty fourteen year end. I believe the first report we produced was January of twenty fifteen, it came to council. At that time, external debt was thirty-seven million dollars. And debt servicing costs were ten point seven percent. And five years later, the debt level has been reduced to twenty million eight hundred. With servicing costs of eight point zero six percent. So that's, that's basically just a result of the regular reprints, principal repayments. So those figures don't really include the debt assumed during the Colas share sale. Since those debentures are not paid by the taxpayer or the rate payer. We actually. Produce an invoice to Colas or Appcor, still going to always call it Colas. But to Appcor every, every month for the amounts that they owe us in terms of the debenture payments. And the only impact that those outstanding amounts have on, on the municipality. Are in relation to our annual borrowing limit. But I don't feel that, that. That's not really a significant impact when you take a look at the fact that the ministry has calculated. That our annual repayment limit is around eight point eight million dollars. So at this point in time, we're already spending four point nine million. But we could borrow another eight point eight million with, with our revenues. It would be tight, it would be a pressure on the, the taxpayer, we'd be looking at service cuts. We'd be looking at those other types of things to make the, the taxes more affordable for the people. But that's what they're saying, which if you take a look at that, the eight point eight million. That means that we could borrow an additional one hundred and ten million dollars in debenture money over twenty years. And that's using a five percent interest rate. When I was talking to Infrastructure Ontario to get the figures for the, the new debt. Calculations, a twenty-year debenture right now is two percent interest. If you ever wanted to borrow, go get some. I don't want to borrow. The internal debt that we have in twenty fourteen, that internal debt was eight point nine million dollars. And the debt servicing costs were one point two one percent. So that balance has actually been reduced to five million, five million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And the debt servicing costs have gone down point eight five percent. And that reduction has actually occurred through a combination of monthly payments for the promissory note between water and wastewater. A budgeted repayment minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And an allocation of surplus in accordance with the surplus allocation policy. So that we can get some of those amounts paid down. So unfortunately, this year we didn't have a surplus. So the one hundred and fifty thousand is, is plus the water, wastewater note are, are the only amounts that we could reduce that by. Committed debt, five years ago. The committed debt figures stood at two point five million dollars and an estimated point five one in debt servicing costs. That committed debt has decreased to one point three million dollars. And the interest rates, as I just mentioned, have, have decreased significantly. So if we were to borrow today for a, a ten-year debenture, the rate would be one point five four percent. And with that in mind, it does decrease the debt servicing cost to point two three percent. So overall, in the five years that we've been tracking debt and providing updates. The debt servicing costs have decreased from twelve point four two percent to nine point one seven. The component parts of the debt indicate that tax-supported debt servicing costs are three point two million or seven point five seven percent. We almost hit the target. The wastewater debt servicing costs are four hundred and seventy-one thousand, and that brings to seven point one six, we almost hit the target. Wastewater costs are still up there, they're one point seven million, and that's seventeen point nine percent. So just to, to let you know, right, there's three debentures that will be paid in full this year. Which will reduce the wastewater percentage to eleven point eight nine percent. And the tax-supported percentage will decrease to six percent. So we will be under the, under the target. And it's entirely up to council, if they wish to refine the targets, keep them where they are, review what's going on. I believe that later on this year, staff will be bringing forward a report. On our reserves, reserve funds and the, the target balances that we have. It's time to review them to, to make sure that they're still in line with the way things should be. So when we still continue on with the debt, we take a, a look at the potential debt. There are still several projects in that five-to-ten-year capital budget that don't have funding sources at this time. So over the next six to seven years, there is a potential of thirty-four million dollar pro, in projects. So one, one of them being the fifteen million that was in, in relation to the waterfront master plan. It would be the largest that would be there, and eight million for the terminals. So it's, we need to determine how they're going to be funded, either through taxes or debt. Or, or grants. And, and some of these projects, especially the wastewater treatment plant, is heavily dependent on development charges. So this may be part of the, the cash deficiency when we're talking about whether the, the DC collections. For wastewater will keep pace with the expenditures as far as the plant expansion goes. And again, that's, that's as I explained earlier, that what will happen is as long as we can maintain our overall balance. In development charges in a positive figure, we can borrow back and forth between them. And kind of wait till we do have the collections there. However, don't ever discount the fact that at some point in time, the rate payers or depending on what type of a project it is. Even the taxpayers may have to kick in until the, the development charges actually do. Get collected. Again, with these policies, we have the pay-as-you-go policy, which was adopted by council. And it was in relation to assisting in reducing the debt levels. And I believe that to a large extent that it has. I would think at this point in time, it may be who've counsel and staff to. To review that policy, to see if you still want to maintain it, if you want to modify it, if you want to carry on. You just have to remember that there are limitations with that policy. It, and, and it really, it, it can impact our ability to fund projects. And, and react to unexpected events, COVID, for instance. But you know, it forces us to focus on the operating expenses and service levels of our operating budget. So it makes it difficult to find room for major capital projects within the budget. If they require a, a large portion of, well, I should say a large portion. But if the tax-supported portion is, for instance, one-third of a, a grant project. And, and we're, we're short. It will maybe make us not spend the grant money, lose it in the future or something like that. And the large infrastructure projects just tend not to lend themselves to efficiently. Being spread out over several stages in, in a manner that would facilitate a pay-as-you-go financing. Now, when it came, for instance, when it came time to do Hume Street, we were lucky, we had the, we had saved enough development charges. We had the ability to use federal gas tax, we received federal and provincial funding. And if I recall correctly, it was down to, to, we had. We had two million dollars left from the initial share sale of Colas. That basically we funded that whole project, so they could start. Took a while, they could start, but they, they didn't have to stop as they went along the street. They could carry on and, and not just do the section between Huron, Ontario and Saint Marie. And wait for a year to collect the money to do the next section. Again, granted, opportunities may influence the decisions that we, we make in, in the future. Because it may provide funding for a, a lower priority. Project and, and it may influence us to, to go there and to spend. Money that we maybe really should think twice about. And again, this is also, this one is also a question of the intergenerational equity. Is it fair for us to think people pay now, pay upfront for what they're going to use over the next twenty years? And that's one of the, the fundamentals behind the matching of the assets lifetime over the debenture. If that's the way you, you currently choose to go. So in, in terms of what we're facing, in, in going along with that pay-as-you-go. We're currently facing a situation where certain projects has, have had to be moved further out. In order to accommodate a, an emergency storm sewer repair. That's not necessarily a, a situation entirely on, on a pay-as-you-go limitation. But it has forced other things out of the way. But it's totally also an asset management plan funding problem. We don't have, we don't have enough in the pot to do everything, so something had to move back. And now I'm going to talk about asset management, the CAO may want to add some comments on this. Counsel did receive an update on our asset management plan in December twenty nineteen. I believe that we are still facing a potential nine million dollar infrastructure gap. The legislation actually indicates that each time we repair a road, a sewer or a building. We should be increasing the amount of money that we are placing in reserve to repair or replace that asset at the end of its useful life. Some of these assets have forty and, and seventy-five-year useful lives. So it does give us a longer time to do it, but a lot of this stuff is non-residential construction. And the non-residential construction index is increasing faster because of the components that's, it's involved in. And then the consumer price index. So when we have a, an target inflation rate of two percent, the non-residential, non-residential index. May grow at a significantly larger amount. So we need to make sure that we're compensating for that over the seventy-five years. And again, the legislation does indicate that each time we consider investing in a brand-new asset. Not, not replacing an existing asset, whether it's a, a building or, or adding an additional vehicle to the fleet. Or building a new park, that the cost to replace that asset at the end of its useful life should be. Placed in reserve so that the funds are there when that useful life has been reached. So one of the one of the examples that I used in the the staff report is the the bus terminal. So there are several components to the building that will require. Maintenance over the estimated forty year life. We're going to have to replace the HVAC. The window seals are going to not. Last forever. We're gonna, you know, the washrooms are gonna have to be renovated. So those will be maintenance that need to be built into the plan itself. So we'll have the money in ten years to replace the HVAC or we'll have. Six thousand dollars or whatever it is to replace to replace the windows. But just in terms of the building itself. The cost was five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And if you're using an inflation rate of the the target inflation rate of two percent. We would require a reserve of one point one million dollars in forty years to to replace that building. If we just did it the same as it is. And so based on that, we should be putting aside twenty eight thousand dollars strictly in reserve for that asset. And I know that staff have indicated in in many reports too and discussions with council. That the method we're using to fund our. Asset management plans, it's it's just simply not sustainable. We're not the only municipality that's facing that, but. It's it's not sustainable. And in fact, the the province has provided a prescriptive. Regulation that governs the asset management plan contents. If there is something that. Lifecycle activities are not planned to be undertaken in the two year period if it's a storm sewer or. Mountain road or whatever. The municipality will have to explain how you're going to manage any risks. Involved with not doing the required. Maintenance or replacement of of that asset. And then at this, at this point, I think that, you know, staff will be recommending that the special capital levy be increased from point seven five. To two percent during that twenty twenty one budget deliberations. Turn it back to you, CAO. Do you have comments?
Very well done. Treasure Leonard, thank you.
All right, I will look then to clerk Thomas. Is there anyone in our gallery that would like to speak to this item?
Through your worship, we do have two additional attendees that have joined. So just a reminder that. You can raise your hand on the toolbar on the bottom of your screen or enter your question in the chat if you have any questions regarding this report. And there appears to be no questions regarding this report.
All right, let's get the item on the floor. So it was T twenty twenty update on debt. It's moved by councillor Madigan and seconded by councillor Doherty. The council receives staff report T twenty twenty dash twelve for information purposes consistent with the town's strategic financial plan and approve the recommendations contained therein. Counselor, are there questions or comments before I call the vote? Counselor Jeffrey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the treasurer. I'm wondering if going forward in that long term consideration, Marjorie, if it would include. An updated BMA report that we could compare to our baseline.
Marjorie.
Through you, your worship. Yes, we can, we can arrange with BMA to have to have one done. Yes. We're just, we're just a little delayed. The way we're doing the audit this year is strange. So the audit and the FIR are just. Not quite there yet, but once we get the FIR done, they'll be able to get all the information.
Okay, thank you. And also, Mr. Mayor, if I might through to the treasurer, I'm wondering in that if we would be considering. If you will, levels of project values. So pay as you go. As currently in our policy would apply to certain. Projects under a certain value and then there might be a little leeway with the big ones because. It seems to me that this policy has been working quite well. But there might be a need to have leeway for the larger ticket items. But I'll just comment before I let ask the mayor to let you answer is that. I find when we didn't have this policy for pay as you go, it's just. Really easy to just borrow the money and put it on the taxpayers going forward as opposed to finding other sources to fund these. So I find this policy has really helped focus focus us on finding money other places.
Marjorie.
Through you, your worship. I would agree with councillor Jeffrey that it has it has provided a direction and focus for council to do it. I would not, I I would not suggest that you eliminate it because I know we're going to have to go into. Situations where we're going to have to borrow for for thirty million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant, those types of things, but. And and actually, I guess, if if we could get that working capital and the the capital contingency reserves. Built back up. There may be more flexibility there anyway, because we would have those emergency type funds to draw on. But. Yeah, I think that looking at the level of the project in in terms of whether it should be a pay as you go and the the priority and emergency. Nature of that project would would be relevant to the page ago.
Thank you.
Councilor Cloud.
Thank you, your worship. Just a point of clarification. In our agenda, it says that what we are going to be looking at here is that we. Will receive this report and approve the recommendations contained therein. I just want to be very clear what I'm voting on. The recommendations being that council direct staff to include consideration of a long term debt position and asset management needs, including the special capital levity in the twenty twenty one budget proposal. To council. So what we're we're doing is we're including this information in the budget that we will start working on probably in late November or. Somewhere around there. Am I am I correct in this in this?
Estimation? Through you, your worship. Yes, that's what it is. We needed some. We need some baseline information if we're going to work on the budget. But I do think the work will start before November.
Of course. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Council questions? Councillor Hamlin.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to our treasurer. Did I hear you say that we have a nine million dollar infrastructure gap?
Through you, your worship. Yes, I would estimate. We're we're still in the estimation. Situation on that because. The original. When we when we originally did the asset management plan. We actually included everything in it, the buildings, the the water, the wastewater. Land improvements for parks and all of those things. And I believe that it is still somewhere around that number. However, when we're looking at. What the requirements are for the asset management plan, we only have to include our core assets. In the calculations until July first of twenty twenty one. Then by July first of twenty twenty three, our asset management plan has to incorporate all of the buildings and all of the vehicles and all of those things. So while we've been working on getting condition assessments for. The water and wastewater, the road sidewalks, we have been putting in the. Vehicles, we've been getting the vehicles in the asset management plan. So. There are other areas like in terms of the wastewater treatment. There are really large components in there that we have to decide if. Because through one of our systems, we can actually do the preventative maintenance plan on it in the system and it will come up. So those are. Some of the areas that we're still working on, but. I would believe if we took a look at all of our. Infrastructure in that way, it would still be at a approximate line, nine million.
So I would say, you know, to me, that's a that is a good number. It seems much lower than what I was expecting. I don't know exactly. I had nothing to go on anything, but nine million seems like a number we could work with.
Yes, through through you, your worship. We have made a lot of. Inroads into that because we have carried on with our sewer renewal projects. And we've carried on and we've done water and a lot of the roads have been done in that way. Like when we look at the condition of our roads. Some people may say their roads not in very good condition, but the average. Condition of our roads in 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 Collingwood. Is actually one up from good. I don't know what the they they have a classification for it, but it's actually one up from good. We have been spending money on that.
Thank you. And I just have one further question through you, Mr. Mayor. There's an appendix to your report that compares Collingwood to various southern municipalities. With a population, it looks like of under thirty thousand. I'm just wondering, to my mind, I always add in a population number to count our part time residents. And in fact, I would say most of them are living here currently. And I know from speaking to our, you know, senior staff before this meeting some time ago. They would normally add about twenty five percent onto our population to account for. Our part time residence. So I'm just, my question is. If if we were comparing us to populations of, you know, thirty to thirty five thousand, do you think? Our numbers would compare any differently? Or have you looked?
I through through you, I have not looked at that, but I could take a quick look tomorrow and see because the next step up, though, I think is. It it's larger than that. I got a feeling. Yeah, it's thirty to fifty thousand, I think is the next. But I'll I can check and put that out tomorrow.
Okay, thanks so much. Thank you.
Council, any questions? Marjorie, I just wanted to follow up on one point. I know councillor Jeffrey's already raised the BMA and we've been using those comparative reports, I think, going back to twenty fifteen or late twenty fourteen. And it's my recollection that the financial position is kind of the overall balancing between your debts and your assets and your liabilities. And I think in around twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, we met, we may made the leap from being in a net deficit position to being in a net positive position. And do you have any idea what that position is today?
To to you, your worship. We have. Got, I have not seen the second draft of the financial statements or audited financial statements. And I just don't have that number at at my fingertips. So it is possible that I can get it tomorrow. The auditors have had one go through on it, but. I can get a copy of that tomorrow and let you know.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, then I will call the vote. All in favor. And that is carried unanimously. And I think, Marjorie, that might be it for you. Thank you.
Just for now, your worship. I'll be back.
Back, will you? Okay. So next we have item four point four CCS twenty twenty dash four, the climate change and green initiatives report back. And I will pass this over to Director Culver, Executive Director Culver. Hi, Dean.
Hi. So I'll be brief. This is a very large report, obviously, and I hope council committee had a chance to read through it. I think I'd like to start by saying this was an inherited project. Started by Cao Skinner before she transitioned to the new role. And she had done an immense amount of work along with Michelle Belashay on on collecting information. You should be grateful to know that I trimmed it from fifteen pages down to eight pages. You're welcome. And but but it's also a report that I'm really, really happy about because it it does, I think, tie together. A lot of what council has indicated to be their interests over the term of this council. In the purpose and section, you'll see a number of motions and requests, and I honestly don't think that's all of them. I think it's. It's all the motions, but I think that there were a ton more requests. And I definitely know there were a lot more inquiries from individual council members surrounding initiatives towards greener. Agreening of calling within climate change. I think it also is a good response to the community interest that showed up in terms of climate change rallies that presented by youth. The formation of the Collingwood Climate Action Team. And and other broad community interest that told us that the town of Collingwood wants to be a champion for climate change response. Within the recommendations, you'll see a couple of things that I'm gonna I'm gonna own up to at least one thing, and that is that the recommendation number one. Asking us to join the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Partners for Climate Protection. We've already done that. It was free, so we took the initiative and did it. So we hope that you support it. I'm sure you will. But but I wanted to become clean that we're already involved in that program. But I think I think if we boil it down to the finish line. Really, this is a larger. Program overall than we have the capacity to serve properly. And I think that's sort of what the the story that's being told through this report. Obviously, you guys all have a strong interest in Collingwood being a champion for. Green initiatives and climate change. Certainly, staff have shown through the formation of the Collingwood Group that they have an interest as well. The community has told us repeatedly through actions and comments and 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 demands, actually, that they would like to see more. But we're really at our maximum capacity and and need to have some support, some resource support in moving forward. So. So we're we're eager to get going. I think we know you are as well. Department heads had a a good conversation about how best to present this. And at the end of the day, we recognize that across the organization, there are resource demands that are not necessarily being met right now. So we've put it to you that resources needed. We've indicated that it it could be brought to you through a budget response or a budget recommendation. But we'll leave it in your capable hands to tell us what you'd like to see happen. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to hear it.
Thank you, Dean. I know we have some of our, or at least one of our members of our local climate action team, Nick Clayton in the audience, and I don't know if. Nick or anyone else in the audience wants to speak to this report before I put it on the floor for council.
Yes, your worship, it looks like Nick would like to speak, so we will allow him to talk.
Greetings, council and the mayor, Sanderson.
Hi, Nick. How are you?
Great, thanks. I will be brief too. Thank you, Executive Director Culver. I read the report. So much to be happy about as with all things coming out of this council when it comes to the environment. Just speaking on behalf of the Collingwood Climate Action Team, we're very excited to have a climate action plan in place because that provides a framework. And when we frame our efforts, it helps us work more effectively towards these shared goals that we have. I've been a big proponent of FCM PCP. I think it's an essential. And I can see councillor Jeffrey there agrees with me and and I think it's just. Essential because the milestone framework provides that that layer of accountability and transparency. And it allows us to to measure our efforts. And when we measure our efforts, we're able to communicate those efforts more clearly. For informed policymaking and also to communicate effectively to the public about the progress we're making. And I don't think you can really say you're having a net positive effect unless you set that baseline and take measurements and report back, reflect. So being in that initiative, I think is is a very, very positive step. And unlike. Executive Director Culver said, it's free. So so why not? I have a question. The report states there will be one corporate staff member and one elected official appointed as a sort of point of contact. Am I right in? Am I correct in assuming that the councillor Jeffrey and the CAO Skinner or?
I will put that through to Dean or the CAO who would like to take that question.
That actually sounds to me like a governance question.
Yes, I think it is.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. I we hadn't actually talked yet about who would be the best representative. To act on this. And I think both Executive Director Culver and myself from a staff perspective. And I think both Executive Director Culver and myself from a staff perspective are very interested. And at the immediate time, he has that staff leadership role. And certainly we hadn't structured the report today to make it easy for you to nominate a potential council member to work, work with us and how that might work. So I thinking that while I'm quite interested in people expressing interest, how to move forward with that is not, not something we've yet contemplated. Thank you.
Nick, anything else? Any follow up?
No, that's, that's excellent. I just look forward to seeing who those people are going to be. So again, we have that framework to work within and know who we're going to be working with. One last point to make for me is just also, I really, really liked seeing that there was going to be, it was considered a recommendation, which I highly support, I'm sure the group will, of having a point person or hiring a contract staff member to head up these green initiatives and procure funding and grants. Would, would I be right in assuming that a position like that would, is a value added or a good value proposition because someone, a salary position like that would be bringing in grants? And I'm assuming there are a lot of, there will be federal money coming in, in line with a just recovery or green recovery because the federal government has indicated that that is forthcoming. So am I right in assuming that a position like that, a contract position would actually be of more, very cost effective? Because it would bring in more possibly money in terms of grants and funding than it would cost the town to pay that salary position?
Dean, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, through you, your worship. That's absolutely one of the objectives of, of the hire is to have them to get grant funding. I wouldn't want to make promises about whether they'll, you know, offset their own expenses, but I, but I think that that definitely would be a, a goal we'd shoot for, offsetting and beyond. So, yes.
Thanks, thanks.
That's it for me. I'm, I look very much forward to working with you all. And Collingwood's just making great strides in its committed pursuit of Sustainable Development Goal 11 UN. And it's very heartening to be part of such a caring community under such responsible leadership. So thank you.
Thank you, Nick, and congratulations to you and your action team for all the work you've done so far. And hopefully we will be working together as we move forward on all of this.
Feeling's very mutual. Thank you.
Good. Sarah, is anyone else from the gallery want to speak on this issue?
It does not look like there's any further interest to speak on this matter.
Okay, then I'll put the motion on the floor, the recommendation. That CCS 2020 dash four, climate change and green initiatives report. It's moved by Counselor Doherty and seconded by Counselor Berman. That staff report CCS 2020 dash four be received and council direct staff to join the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Partners for Climate Protection PCP Program, which consists of a five-step milestone framework. That council direct staff to continue with existing measures and actions regarding corporate green initiatives and climate change response. The council direct staff to visibly indicate on staff reports when a report may have positive implications for corporate green initiatives or is a positive contribution towards the fight against climate change. And the council direct staff to include the acquisition of a qualified part-time contract staff to support corporate green initiatives and achieve objectives and expected deliverables over a three-year term, a three-year timeframe within the 2021 budget proposal to council. Council questions or comments? Counselor McLeod.
Thank you, your worship. Just a point of clarification on, on the direction that we are giving. This does not commit us if we say yes to this recommendation to, to hiring this three-year part-time person come budget day. Days. Does it or does it?
No, it wouldn't. It would be subject to budget discussions and deliberations, but I will look to Director, Executive Director Culver to confirm that.
No, this is, doesn't commit council to that hire at this time. In fact, I would say that the spirited debate or discussion at department heads was that there are a lot of community or needs in the organization for staffing. And so we've invested, so was able to look at it in a fuller picture and make decisions. But I will say, I think it's very fair and safe to say that we'll be very, we'll struggle to achieve some of these objectives that are outlined in the report without an additional resource. But again, you're not committing to that today.
Thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Doherty, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And through you to Acting Executive Director Culver. It is so gratifying to see in this report what we have achieved and what we are in process of achieving, very affirmative action. And I look very much forward to see some, some of the deliverables that are going to come out of some of these initiatives. I also had a question in regard to the recommendation of a staff hire to implement some of these recommendations. Do you envision that this could be seconded or half seconded from another existing role within the municipality?
Dean?
So through you, Mayor Saunderson, I, I'll be honest with you. I, I, I don't think so. I think that there's somewhat of an expertise required here. We have, and I think it's a very narrow field. We're, we've had lots of conversations about the kind of applicant that would be successful in, in this role. And I think it is somewhat specific. I also think too that, and I think it's really important for council to understand that we're, we're fighting through probably the hardest time. Well, definitely in the history of, of, of our organization is anybody who's been in our organization for the longest period of time. Resources were maxed and at a premium before COVID. And now we're struggling even more. We've done redeployments where we can within the COVID timeframe to sort of try and move through the COVID timeframe. But really the comments mean that somebody is not, doesn't have a full workload where they are. And so my, my suggestion is that it's not likely that we'll find that with our organization. Now, the, the expertise required notwithstanding.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Doherty. Counselor Comey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Executive Director Culver. And then just for a final and point of clarification on this thread, then just for memory's sake, at budget time, will we see this from PRC as a supplemental line item? Or I apologize, I'm not sure what department will see this from. Will this be considered a supplemental? Or is it going to be embedded in the budget? Because sometimes I just have a hard time remembering.
Executive Director.
Yeah, thank, thank you. That's a good, that's a good question and very fair. The budget document is obviously very thick and I can understand why it's difficult to sort of pull out initiatives at the time where we're reviewing budget. I don't know how it's going to be presented, to be perfectly honest with you. I think what we've talked about at department has is having it presented in the context of staff overall. But I see Marjorie wanting to comment and I'm positive she'll have a constructive comment that.
Through you, your worship. I believe that any staff request is going to be shown as a service enhancement. Unless it will cut current overtime that staff are working. There's, there's a difference that by, if you can have people that are working tons of overtime with my staff, still are, until we can get our contract financial analyst. The overtime that my staff work will pay for the person that I'm, I'm, I'm going to hire for that position. So unless this is something along those lines, it'll be shown as a service enhancement.
Yeah, it's through you, your worship. I think actually our policy is always to show service enhancements as separate initiatives within the budget as well. And this would definitely be a service enhancement. We'd be increasing our scope of services with this.
Okay, that's great. Then I don't have to save a file or sign. Thank you so much for that clarification.
Counselor Jeffrey.
Thank you, Ms. Saunderson. Just briefly, I'd like to thank Nick for covering all my material. Including the case, which I think is important and worth repeating, is that having those baselines and hitting those milestones puts us in such a better place for green infrastructure funding, particularly through the Green Municipal Fund at FCM. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Hamlin, you had your card up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just really had two comments. One was of course always subject to bottom line budget discussions. But I'm very excited prospect of having a person hired on a part-time basis to make sure that we have some real corporate focus on these kind of initiatives. I know a young person in another municipality who has this kind of a role. And they had a master's, they have a master's degree in environmental science. And it's a whole different perspective than, well, than I would have, for example. And I think it would really allow us to get to the next level in our environmental actions. And secondly, I also just wanted to point out that I thought it was great that staff suggesting that they'll visibly indicate on the staff reports when the recommendations will have a positive impact on our green initiatives. So I will be supporting this for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, this has been an extremely in-depth report and it's the result of a lot of man-hours of labor, both by our CAO and our Executive Director. And this is an exciting initiative and one that we've been working forward to and one that's extremely timely and necessary. So I will certainly be supporting it as we work forward on this, this front. With that being said, then I will call the, the vote. All in favor? And that is carried unanimously, I think, but we may have just lost. Oh, no, there is. Do we, someone? No, okay, good. Dean just checked out. All right. That takes us then to the consent agenda. And it is moved by Counselor Berman and seconded by Counselor Jeffrey that the general consent agenda, having been given due consideration by the standing committee, be received. And there are seven items. 5.1 Town of Bracebridge establishment of a municipal financial assistance program. 5.2 Town of Kingsville expansion of provincial rent assistance program. 5.3 Town of Renfrew fast-tracking and investing in Canada infrastructure program grant applications. 5.4 Various businesses and residents of Simcoe County just recovery from COVID-19. 5.5 Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit basic income for income security during COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. 5.6 Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit council meetings for during phase three. And 5.7 Ethnic Mosaic Alliance read letter of interest to support a multicultural center in Collingwood. So first I'll call vote to adopt the agenda and then I'll ask council if they want to pull any items. So first receiving the report, all in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And counselor, there are any names you'd like to pull? I've got a number. So first we'll start with Counselor McLeod.
5.4 and 5.5, please.
Counselor Comey.
5.3, please, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Doherty.
Thank you. I was also going to ask for 5.4, but I will add 5.7, please.
Okay. And Counselor Hamlin.
Sorry, also 5.7. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go numerically then, starting with 5.3. Town of Renfrew fast-tracking of investing in Canada infrastructure program grant applications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a letter and I, I give full acknowledgement that perhaps Executive Director Culver didn't have a chance to have a peek at it. But it's an ICIP, then reference the ICIP grants, which I believe this is the reference, the same ones that we're, we've applied to for the Fisherfield Super Deluxe Clubhouse Extraordinaire. And the town of Renfrew is saying, whereas the County of Renfrew and the other 19 municipalities and First Nation reserves have submitted over 73.5 million worth of applications to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program Community, Culture and Recreation Stream with all considered shovel-ready worthy projects. And what they, they're go on to say is they call upon the Government of Ontario and Canada to fast-track review of current and previous ICIP grant applications in order to provide much-needed employment and investment into Ontario to provide sustainable infrastructure. And so my thought here is that, and Executive Director Culver, through you, Mr. Mayor, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I mean, this particular grant we applied to was back on November 12th. We just talked about it on Monday that we're in a holding pattern. We have this wonderful shovel-ready project and we are stuck waiting. And if this is the same flavor of grant application we applied, I would be very much in support of us sending a similar letter so we can see where we stand and get some of these projects going.
Executive Director Culver.
Yes, through you, your worship. It's, it is the same base grant, ICIP. It's a different stream of the grant is all, but certainly I'm not opposed to fast-tracking. We, we are waiting. Certainly understand that in the current, you know, situation globally, why, why there've been delays. But the sooner we get the answer on which week we can go with the funding, the sooner we'll be able to start making something happen at Fisherfield. So I don't have any concerns with council if they wish to do the same.
Thank you, Executive Director Culver. And this was a motion. So I will look to Clerk Almas. What would be the best way to get this on the floor or is it a notice of motion that will be dealt with at the next meeting? Give us some advice there, please, Sarah.
Certainly through your worship. Items requiring further direction from members of council, notice 24 hours in advance, the meeting is required. So right now it would be considered a notice of motion to be considered at the next meeting.
Okay. Counselor Comey, would you like to put a notice of motion on the floor?
Yes, please. And I'll, I'll sort of wing it on the fly because as Executive Director Culver pointed out, Mr. Mayor, it's a slightly different stream of the same ICIP grant. So it would be, I suppose, for the Town of Collingwood to send a letter requesting fast-tracking of ICIP grant application status. Perhaps Clerk Almas and I can tweak that a little bit, the flavor of which is contained here from the city of Renfrew.
Okay, so we've got that read in and we'll leave it to you to connect with Clerk Almas to finalize the wording on that.
Thank you so much.
5.4 Various businesses and residents of Simcoe County just recovery from COVID-19. Who asked for that one to be pulled? Counselor McLeod.
Thank you. I also asked for 5.5 to be pulled and they do seem to be rather connected. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring attention to these two items because they do really seem to be somewhat related to the situation we find ourselves in as a society and a world right now. And, and I think that people have said, I think it's an old curse, that a crisis is an opportunity, the flip side of crisis is opportunity. And one of the things that I've been having conversations about during the last several months of COVID is not that adversity builds character, but that it reveals it. And I think we have an opportunity as a country to reveal our character. We have universal healthcare and, and we look after people. And I think that if we could also, as our, as the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit has suggested, or the, sorry, the, as is suggested, yeah, from the health unit, that if we could encourage our federal government to consider a universal basic income, that it would provide resilience for many people across this country. And so I will be bringing a notice of motion, which sort of encapsulates the sentiments carried within these two items on the consent agenda. I could do that now or I can bring it during other business. It is at your discretion, obviously.
No, I think, as I understand, the intent of your notice is to bring a motion to ask the federal government. And there was a provincial pilot project with the last wind governments. So I don't know if you want to go after both levels of government to implement a guaranteed income supplement program. So if, does that capture the thrust?
Oh, I have it written out.
Oh, okay. Well then, go ahead.
So my notice of motion reads as follows. Whereas the council, the Corporation of the Town of Collingwood has received correspondence from Anita Dubois, Chair Board of Health, Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit dated May 20, 2020, regarding basic income for income security during COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. Whereas to help reduce the financial strain on its citizens and businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic, the Town of Collingwood has approved a dispersment of funds to local food banks and redirection of municipal funds to providing temporary tax relief to residents in crisis. And whereas current research into universal basic income has shown potential to improve individual physical and mental health, labor market participation, food security, housing stability, has shown potential to improve individual physical and mental health, labour market participation, food security, housing stability, financial status and social relationships, and generally raise the standard of living for vulnerable members of society, therefore be it resolved that Collingwood Town Council supports the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit's call to the federal government for the evolution of the Canada Emergency Response Benefit, SERB, into a universal basic income for all Canadians, and that this resolution be forwarded to the Right Honourable Prime Minister, the Honourable Premier, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, local MPPs and MPs, the County of Simcoe, and municipalities across the province of Ontario.
Very good. So we've got that read into the record and and thank you for that. Now councillor Doherty, I know you had pulled one of those items as well. Did you want to speak to the matter as well?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Really, I just wanted to congratulate this group of very diverse community interest groups who have put together such a thoughtful and thorough analysis of the opportunities that have arisen because of this COVID-19 emergency, social opportunities, economic and environmental. And I also, it it seemed to me that a lot of these recommendations actually were incorporated in the US, the UN Sustainable Development Goal 11, in which we are participating as a demonstration municipality. And I was just wondering if you or C O Skinner would care to just elaborate on on some of the things that we are doing or will be doing that follow along the same lines.
I will pick it up and then I will pass it to Executive Director, sorry, C O Skinner. We did have a meeting last week for the World Summit, the upcoming World Summit, and it was, I think, a very productive meeting. We are working closely with the Steering Committee. And I think the C O and I had planned to give a more thorough report back to council maybe at a subsequent meeting in July to make sure that everyone's up to date on on the initiative and what it entails. And so I think for today, we've given our length of our agenda that I'm going to, that we're going to push it forward. But we will certainly be providing a much more in-depth report to to council on that initiative. Sonia, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, your worship. Just that it has been decided that the initial conference, which was intended to be in Collingwood on the 1st and 2nd of September, has been moved to a virtual platform. And we're still working on the how that will work and some of the other details that we'll tell you more about at shortly upcoming meeting.
Thanks, Sonia. And the last item we had was, oh, go ahead, councillor Doherty.
Actually, I I was just jumping ahead to that, your worship. Item 5.7, the Ethnic Mosaic Alliance, which is a letter which has been sent to us to support a multicultural centre in Collingwood. And I was intrigued by this proposition and I was wondering what we knew further about this. As an example, could such a centre include what we would consider to be a more, what am I looking for? Commonly understood community centre. So I'm like that, I'm just throwing it out here, like Peter Collingwood as an example, to become a partner in something like that. And also if we knew whether they were entertaining or would entertain private investment component.
I'm into the letter did come into town halls. I'm going to look to C O Skinner to address that.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to councillor Doherty. I don't know a lot about the letter. I had that reached out to Mark Aiken because it talks about a collaboration. Who's the C O, of course, of Simcoe County. Because the letter talks about a collaboration through the county, just to see if in fact the funding had been committed. The amount of momentum and support perhaps that were behind this group, because I personally have not heard of the group before. I'm not quite sure if they've been around a long time or a short time and how large they are. If there is interest in finding out more, then we could do that upon the instruction of council. We were a little concerned about the timeframe, which is why we wanted to get it on this agenda, even though we hadn't, well, we get it on the agenda when it comes in. But we haven't gotten all the facts and the timeframe is relatively short. I believe it's August 10th in the letter itself that they're asking for the municipality to indicate interest. And I do think it seems as though the writer is looking for collaboration potentially among community groups or you know, other interested parties across municipalities and the other sectors. Thank you.
Councillor Doherty, did you want to?
No, thank you very much. I actually had addressed a note to the author of that letter, but I hadn't heard anything back yet. So if I hear anything, I will also convey it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that concludes all the items in the consent agenda. Go ahead, councillor Hamlin.
I had also, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, wanted to talk to that item 5.7.
Okay, go ahead.
So I found this to be a very, you know, exciting opportunity for Collingwood. And I was wondering if I, you know, I would be very much in favor of seeing if we could get this on to a subsequent agenda with a staff report that would indicate whether this would be worthwhile us filing a letter of interest and an intent of interest, I guess, and the deadline being August the 10th. I see this as an opportunity for us to demonstrate our commitment to our multicultural community. And it may in fact help our employers who are always seeking employees from a broad spectrum of of our talent pool. I noticed that the intention is very much a community centre. And I was very excited to see that because, you know, we can't have too much of that. I noticed, of course, to my eye, the big item being that they're looking for land to be donated. And it may be something we could also think about whether there would be land privately owned that could be made available for this. So there is a lot of thinking to be done, but I would be grateful if we could somehow get this a staff report with whatever information could be gleaned in the time available with view to seeing whether it's worthwhile getting in a letter of intent.
Okay, so staff report's going to require some resources and I know we've been asking for a heads up on that. I'm wondering if we could ask C O Skinner, based on what we've heard from councillor Doherty as well about reaching out to the author, if we can get some additional background information. And then maybe bring bring that back to council for a determination of how we're going to proceed and if we're looking at, I'm not sure if we have really time for a staff report, given the August 10th deadline and we don't have meetings into August. So I would look to C O Skinner for some input on what you think would be the best way to look into this.
Thank you, your worship. I think that the best I am very conscious of resources. I think that it would be, it would be fair to look into this and see what we can find as far as immediately available information to bring back to our next meeting opportunity in July. And we can make a recommendation at that point on how exciting it is and how how we may or may not be able to proceed. But I wouldn't want to say stop right now. And I wouldn't want to commit to a staff report. So I really like that middle ground of let's, let's see if it excites us once we know a little bit more.
Yeah.
I see councillor Hamlin and Doherty nodding, so that's that's acceptable. Okay, then C O Skinner, I think if you could proceed in that way, that would be great. And I think, have I missed anyone then on the consent agenda or is that the full items? Okay, so now we get into departmental updates, section six. And item 6.1 is seek council's input on options and approach for asset sale proceeds decision. And I will pass it over to C O Skinner.
Thank you very much, your worship. We haven't talked about the approach or the the intentions for the asset sale proceeds for a while. And one of the councillors or or two, or the councillor and the mayor had asked me about how this will come back to the table. And I thought it was worthwhile having this discussion today. The intention is not that we would walk away necessarily, or we're not asking for for a motion. But looking at the range of inputs that are provided by council members and should be considered in staff and the development of the the reports that you will receive next. And also to help set mutually consistent expectations between council and staff on on how this will roll out. This is a very important decision. And these these funds were in place when council took office. And I know that there is an intention articulated to to have make a decision on this during this mandate of council. And it is also contained in our strategic plan to do so. So one slide three, there's a little bit of background. There's about 17,480, 17 million. Yay, $480,000 available. And you would have seen in the financial reports from the treasurer earlier that that was about $200,000 higher, but we did use some of the funds this year for, I believe, some parks-related work at the time of the 2020 budget. So we can do a lot of things with with this funding. I I didn't say in my bullet points that we could just spend it on small things, but we could. But I'm hoping that will support the town's fiscal responsibility and sustainability and potentially also enable otherwise unattainable legacy project or or two. In looking at this, I really think that the criteria we'd be looking at in a staff report are projects that significantly contribute toward our town vision, following the strategic plan and the master plans that are tangible, publicly useful and enduring. So slide four talks about the initial staff starting point. So this is just a reminder, nothing new in this slide whatsoever. But in February of this year, you received a report that was really a kickoff saying, here's a list of things that staff think might be the right way to spend the asset sale proceeds. And those options included paying down the tax-supported internal debt, which is sitting at around, at the time, 3.3 million. So there, that's where we are loaning it between departments, as Marjorie was explaining earlier, relatively low interest rate. Collingwood terminals, up to 10 million. Various projects, the three noted, were extending services to the the spit, the terminals area and the yacht clubs. Property in the downtown or the waterfront areas. And staff accommodation. And we were looking at the time at the 10th line, which was a full renewal with more space for vehicles and equipment and staff change rooms and the like to enable a number of more years at that spot. An internal loan fund. Reserves, including addressing the asset management gap or portions of it. And the legacy funds. So there's two options that were mentioned in that initial report. One was a broader community foundation. And the second was a legacy fund investment just for town initiatives. So in that last bullet point, you would never spend the capital. You would simply spend the interest or earnings on those funds in perpetuity on projects for either the broader community or I guess council's priorities in the legacy fund investment. And slide five. The Treasury Finance Department led a public consultation. So we get public input into the survey, the asset sale proceeds. And there were 761 people who responded. And the numbers following each bullet point are how many people had recommended using each of these options. This is straight out of the report as well. Nothing new here that you didn't see in November of last year. So there was paying down the debt, which is happening in any case. Investing in the terminals, waterfront, and I put these in descending order of the number of people who who supported them. The waterfront master plan, reserve fund. Hospital reserve fund, supporting arts, culture and theatre, extending services to the spit. Establishing an internal loan fund and property in or near the downtown core. And then, of course, there were a number of other recommendations that sort of fall off from there and that are in the in the report. Some of these, depending on how you look at them, could be grouped, like if you look at the terminals and extending services to the spit, for example, they would add up to 361 votes, which would put them, you know, even nearer the top of the list. And then there's another one about the waterfront master plan, which would push some of the work at, you know, terminals and spits higher on the on the list as well. On the next slide. It just talks about new input. So since those two reports, if we look through the strategic plan and what's happened to us, other options have been the the notional commitment of some amount up to 2.5 million to a COVID recovery fund. And in the strategic plan, the property or land item was expanded from waterfront and downtown to include potential other green spaces, green interconnectivity and future town facilities, whether that be a multi, multiplex or or something else. So that's the long list of all of the potential investments that are currently to date on the table. And I'm going to ask you, not right now, but at the end of the presentation, if that long list is the list that covers council's interests. Slide seven talks about now the approach for the decision. So you can always know more. This approach A is is the learn more first approach. So we're still looking at within this council's mandate. But the idea here is that we would have a community foundation report back, the grain terminals report back. Our 2021 budget, where we would learn a bit more about our asset management plans and how we can meet our asset needs with an adjustment to the capital levy or not. And then there's other things that could happen subsequent even to that, going into 2021, things like the rest of the grain terminals information. The first report back probably won't finalize the funding, for example. If we went to an RFP or a design competition, or for that matter, even went to a a contract for the removal of the terminals, all of those would have different financial commitments that we we wouldn't know until we take in the second step. The Arts Centre feasibility study will will report back. Executive Director Culver mentioned at the CCS committee earlier this week that we need to take another look at the staff accommodation study, for example, which had previously had about $20 million of investments over the next 15 or so years. So this option really says later in 2021, when we've got a better handle on some of those big picture items, we would decide how to allocate the asset sale proceeds. On the next slide is another option, called it Approach B. So that one basically says we're really close to a report back on a community foundation and the initial report back on the grain terminals, which will be followed very quickly before November, I hope. Maybe it would be November, December before you decide, but the the overall budget for 2021 with that more refined asset management and capital levy items in it, at which time you could then subsequently in December or possibly January, because we'll be busy on our agendas on what to do with the asset sale proceeds. And I guess there's always other options that accelerate even even before that. But these are the two that I think are reasonable for starting positions. So that's the end of the update. The last slide really asks you the two questions that this this is meant to do, to have a very positive conversation between to have a very positive conversation between all the members about your thoughts on these two questions. Are the potential expenditures listed in this presentation those that you would like to further continue and consider? Happy to have any deleted or added. And do you prefer one of these two approaches to making a decision on the capital asset funds? And with that, I'll turn it back to the Chair, Mayor Sanderson, for the discussion.
Thank you, Sonia. And given that this is a big public interest, I will ask Sarah to see if there's anyone in the gallery that would like to comment on the presentation we just received before I put it on the floor for council.
Again, I will ask through your worship if there's any attendees wishing to speak to this matter. And at this point, there's no interest to comment on this report.
All right, then I will look to council, council questions, comments. Counselor McLeod.
Yes, I'm doing this again, clarifying what it is that we're voting on. So I'm looking at the slides and I see six things listed in one of the in slide number four. The options included paying down tax-supported internal debt, the terminals, these projects, the internal loan fund reserves and legacies. Is that what we're looking at today? Or potentially limiting ourselves to when you say, is this the list through you, Mr. Mayor, to the acting CIO?
Okay, I think we're opening the discussion and inviting any additional ideas, but I'll pass it over to Sonia.
You're going to need to turn your mic on.
Thought I did that, but thank you. Yes, what I'm looking for is your input on slides four, five and six about whether these are the list of items that you would like to have further considered. However, unless the SIC would like to put a motion on the table, there is no motion proposed. What we're doing is gathering information for a staff report. So I don't think that it will definitively take anything off the table, but it will allow us to provide a report that has been transparently and well-considered using the the public input of council.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Counselor Doherty, did you have your card up?
Thank you, I did. But I was more prepared to comment on slides seven and eight in terms of the go-forward approach.
That's fine.
You're not.
No, go ahead.
Excuse me. So I guess I'm leaning toward the approach A for a decision. I'm generally in agreement with the list that has been compiled both by council and by members of the public when we went out initially and surveyed for desire for use of funds. But I, what I like about the approach A is that we're going to take a little bit longer to get some important and hopefully quantified information relative to potential use for the grain terminals, feasibility of the art center, et cetera. I think that this information is so important to have. And this expenditure so critical that I wouldn't want to make any decisions until I had that kind of information in front of me. So leaning toward the more longer term or slightly more delayed but more robust consideration of future impacts before we make the decision.
Okay, so I'm not going to look for a sec. Can I take it then, Counselor Doherty, that you're putting option A on the table?
Yes, I am, but I'm really soliciting for feedback or soliciting because feedback has been asked.
Right, and I appreciate that. I'm not going to ask for a second or yet, I'm going to continue the discussion and then when we've had that, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. I think option A would be a luxury. I kind of go in between A and B. The closer we get to 2022, it seems, whether we like it or not, the closer you get to an election year, the more the crazy the discussions go on in terms of spending money or allocating money, if you will. So for me, I think in terms of us being able to have the healthy discussion and somewhere between B and A might work better, but I think the list is pretty all-inclusive. Seventeen point eight million sounds like a lot of money. If you look at that list, it's not. And we're going to have to make some tough decisions within that list.
Any other questions or comments, council? Go ahead, Counselor Hamlin.
I'm satisfied with the list for the proceeds. I think the last one that was added, which was the property item expanded to include green spaces, interconnectivity and future town facilities, opens things up a lot more in my mind and really makes the list, you know, agreeable to me. And also I'm happy for approach A for the reasons that Counselor Doherty gave.
Thank you. Counselor Comey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo the comments of Counselor Doherty. I think it's a substantial amount of money. And the more I'm, the more information, the better type of person. If I interpreted that slide correctly, me and through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps CEO Skinner can walk through some of those finer points a little more fully so that I can understand them. I think there was a little more fuller look at the terminals and some additional information. I think engineering reports that had been requested early on. So that's how I was interpreting A. I saw the arts feasibility study, which I remember council supporting. I lean towards that. Overall, just as a comment, I would offer, I've always been surprised at how low a response I consider we got from our residents in terms of usage, about seven hundred or so respondents. I think, you know, we did, we got a much larger response when it came to cannabis. So I take it we're at a runway to go back to the public. But I mean, based on what we have, we'll work with it. There's nothing at this time I would add to that list. But looking back on it, I think it's worthy of consideration. Why that turnout was fairly low in terms of response from our residents, but we'll have to work with what we have. But long story short, I would be in favor of a slow and methodical approach to how we're going to spend this with faith that our council would not act in any other way, but good faith with this exercise, not swayed by any political motivation. So I thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think Counselor Jeffrey had to step out. Counselor McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in support also of option A. It's only six months. And I think whether what Counselor Jeffrey, and I am loathe to speak to what she had to say without her at the table. But I think whether the discussion gets crazy during an election year will be up to us. And so let's commit not to get crazy during that. And so I will be supporting that we stick with the list and and go with option A.
Okay, thank you. I know Counselor Jeffrey's not here, but I think she was referring more to that if you get too backed up into the term, you become lame duck. So she was concerned about making significant financial decisions too closely to the election.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments then? I know Counselor Doherty's put option A on the floor. And unless there's any other comments, I will look for a second or. Do you want other to second option A? I've got Counselor McLeod. And so this is a very big initiative for us. This isn't, you don't sell assets very often. And they are in my, when you get the benefit of those sale of those, you need to invest them in the best interests of the community, and these are big decisions. So I'm certainly in favor of option A and taking the time to make sure we have the best available evidence before we make our decisions on this very significant legacy fund. So with that being said, I'm going to call the vote for option A, which is the learn more first. All in favor? Opposed? Duly noted. All right. And that brings us to item six point two, economic support and recovery recommendation update. CIO Skinner.
Thank you very much, your worship. I actually have Martin Ridlow on the line, and there he is. He's going to run us through the many things that have happened since the task force. You provided direction on the task forces recommendations about a month or so ago.
Yes, welcome, Martin. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sanderson, members of council. I just want to give you a brief update in terms of where we're at in terms of the task force recommendations. If I can draw your attention to the website page where we actually have all those summarized. It is at www.collingwood.ca/taskforce. And that can act as a helpful guide for all the great recommendations that they provided us with. I'm just going to quickly step through them and show if there are any questions at the end. Happy to answer them. This is more of a update rather than a more detailed discussion, any of the specific items. Let me begin with item number one, which relates to economic impact metrics. We are well on our way to be able to present our first dashboard this month. And the numbers are coming in relatively well, actually. In terms of business support and recovery services, as you may have seen, we have launched the new seven-step checklist that is available at www.collingwood.ca/recovery. And it makes it super easy for businesses to understand what are the core things they need to be doing. And that's certainly something that we heard was a major challenge for businesses. We have radio, videos, social media campaigns launching this week to promote this, as well as the new twenty-five-hundred-dollar digital Main Street grant available to businesses through the expanded service squad. And that was just announced in the Collingwood Business Newsletter that you all receive as well. So we're certainly getting that great news out. Under number three, business and tourism relaunch marketing. Our shop local video series has launched through the South Georgian Bay Tourism Association. That is, of course, part of the recovery and resiliency plan that was approved last month. And we'll see more of that recovery and resiliency plan rolling out over the next few weeks. This includes the shop safely poster that was developed by the Tourism Association in an effort to try and create a consistent message for shoppers in the region in terms of what are the six key behaviors that we are hoping that they follow. It's meant to be a guideline. And as such, we're just making sure that all the municipalities are aware of its intent as a guideline. It's not something that is a set of mandated activities. It is meant to be a gentle encouragement for people shopping to make sure that they follow the guidelines set out. And it's something that's actually been done in cooperation with Blue Mountain Resort, as well as the Blue Mountain Village Association. So I just want to make sure we share this with council, so you're aware of this. And we'll be following up with them to endorse the use of the municipal's municipalities logo on it, as are all the other representatives within the Tourism Association as they go back to their respective CAOs and councils to just make sure everyone's aware of what's happening there. The Collingwood remarketing campaign is coming along well. We have assembled a group of marketing experts from Collingwood that are, if you will, working very much as advisors on a volunteer basis at this point to help set up a brief. And we'll be following up with council shortly on that. And finally, we have begun our business outreach program, calling businesses with some of our existing staff. And we are going to be posting the new small business advisor position next week so that we can further expand our support and recovery services at the Business Development Center. Number four, relaunch events, the Canada porch parties and the peak to shore virtual celebration went really well. We really stood out in terms of some of the major municipalities that were doing virtual events on Canada. And it's a great example of collaboration between Collingwood and the Blue Mountains, as well as the local businesses. As a follow-up to the town's social media channels and the commitment to put on virtual concerts, please do follow our social media channels. There are concerts there, there are performances. It is really admirable what the PRC team has been able to assemble to deliver on the specific recommendations of the task force. The virtual downtown discovery tours are going to be talked about today under item six point five as part of the Main Street Modernization Project. And last but not least, under this one, we're working on downtown street closure pilots. And that's once again, something that we'll be talking about some more today. And as you've seen, the work that has been done to allow patios to be on streets has had a resounding response with some very unique, amazing patios already out there dotting downtown Collingwood. The shop local incentive, as you recall, council authorized getting a consultant to provide a more detailed plan feasibility review. I'm just top lining their findings, knowing that we need to come back to council with some more details. But quickly, they do believe it is feasible, but no earlier than the end of September. And that would require immediate dedication of significant resources. There certainly can be financial benefit, but they feel the biggest benefit is actually going to be more of an emotional community engagement initiative, which was good to note. This consultant has had extensive experience in points and rewards programs, a chapter's Indigo, American Express. They can certainly speak from a point of expertise. And they did suggest that there may be some lower risk opportunities to explore and deliver on the same objective. And that is exactly what we're evaluating and discussing with staff over the next few days so that we can come back to council in the coming weeks in terms of what to do here. And last but not least, under supporting social services, the roundtable continues to be a source of collaboration, as is the weekly meetings that we do have set up around PPE resource availability. And that has, of course, become even more important, given this week's announcement around the requirement of having face protection in indoor public spaces. And that wraps it up for today's update on the task force recommendations.
Go ahead, Sonia.
Just wanted to mention briefly that Martin said as he was speaking that there is a document that was being put up in our businesses about how each person can act responsibly. And that's the document that we would like and are intending to put the Collingwood logo on. And we're hoping some other municipalities will as well. And we'll be consistent across all the municipalities. So if you see it out there with our logo on it, you'll have seen it first here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Comments or questions, council? Seeing none, then we will move on to the next item, six point three is the fourth quarter variance report. Treasurer Leonard, Marjorie, are you still with us?
Certainly am, your worship. Okay, Chris, you go the next one. I just like to remind everybody every year that when we go to look at this, that a budget is just an estimate of costs, revenues and resources over a specified period of time, reflecting a reading of future financial conditions and goals. So in other words, it truly is the best guess of all staff and department heads. Okay, Chris? And again, the surplus is actually a combination of nineteen hundred and fifty operating account variances throughout the general ledger. So what I tried to do is hit the highlights of the variances within each section. So this year, overall, tax-related revenues were one million fifty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars higher than budgeted. User fees and other revenues were seven million one hundred and eighty-four thousand higher than budgeted. User fees and other revenues were seven million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand higher than budgeted. And expenses were eight million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand over budget. Chris? Going down. The, uh, surplus for the mayor and council of, uh, seventy-three thousand, five hundred. It's, uh, the savings there were, were realized in community recognition of thirty-three hundred. Um, employee Bennett's of benefits of twenty-three thousand, six hundred. And those were actually, uh, based on the prior year's increase. And that increase in, uh, benefit amounts was, um, higher than, uh, the actual increase that came out. Between all of the council members and the mayor, the professional development accounts were underspent by fifteen thousand. Uh, receptions, we had savings there of six thousand. And, uh, in terms of, um, the strategic plan, we actually had provided a $25,000 budget line in there. For, um, strategic plan, but. All of that work has, uh, been done in-house and there's been, uh, very little cost to it. Terms of council grants, there was a surplus there of eighty-one thousand, one hundred. Now, council grants themselves, uh, was, uh, a savings of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred. What happened there is that we had set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To assist the hospital with the planning phase for the redevelopment. And, uh, the hospital did not request a draw of on any of those funds. So that's also where we provided the, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars support. For the out of, uh, cold program. And in addition to that, the, uh, P R C in kind. Support was actually over budget by eleven thousand. So we're going to net down to the, uh, eighty-one. And elections, it just had a deficit of thirty-one hundred. It was. Just it was. Next, Chris? Corporate management, this is a deficit of one million, eight hundred and five thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars. So just, just remember that corporate management is the catchall for many other departments. In, uh, twenty nineteen, we budgeted a total of five hundred thousand dollars for the corporate reorganization. Now, those, uh, reorganization expenses, uh, that are in relation to that amount. Are scattered throughout the general ledger. So we tried to get as many of them in administration as we could, but there still are some areas. That are, um, in, in other parts of the financial statements. The judicial inquiry costs for, uh, twenty nineteen were five million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. And that is the majority of the over budget results. The, uh, net cost of the, um. Judicial inquiry is an over budget amount of two point five million dollars. When we take a look at that, there, there were various over and under budget accounts that, uh, did reduce, uh, the deficit. It would have been a lot higher than the one point eight. We had savings in areas like advertising, conferences, uh, corporate contingency, contracted services. Inter-governmental relations, building repairs, those amounts were between, um, eighteen and, um, fifty thousand dollars each. Salary contingency was, uh. Hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred savings. Uh, transfer to capital was a hundred and thirty-three, four hundred. There were a few items that were, um, over budget and they include annual support, which is based on our computer. Licensing and systems and that was, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars over budget. Employee benefits were, um. Ninety-four thousand dollars, uh, over budget, insurance, twenty-one thousand over budget, insurance claims. Twenty-one thousand over budget and, uh, salaries were over by ninety-seven thousand. Next one, Chris? Corporate services, we had, um, a surplus of, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred there. So the corporate services comprise customer service, calling with terminals, fleet and facility, I T and H R. In terms of, uh, the under budget accounts here, there was ninety-seven hundred dollars for annual support again related to the, uh. Computer, uh. Licensing and, uh, a sixty-three thousand dollar savings for, uh, software. And that was due to the timing of, uh, the rollout of office three sixty-five. You don't just go out and buy three hundred licenses, you buy each license by user. So we, the, uh, I T guys did so many at a time. And, uh, that's why there was a timing difference there. There was a sixty thousand dollar savings in consulting fees. And that was mostly related to the compensation review process, which just got started. Towards the end of the year and, uh, then we got COVID. Um. There were contracted services, savings there of roughly, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars in, uh, in over the various operating units. That, uh, comprise corporate services. Savings of, uh, ninety-eight hundred in labor relations, eighty-nine hundred in legal fees. Fifteen thousand dollars in staff recruitment savings. Fifteen thousand dollars in, uh, staff training and thirty thousand dollars, uh, for studies. So there were a few more savings there, but again, uh, some of the, uh, amounts in, um. Admin in corporate management may have applied here in terms of, uh, and it was a little. It was a little more, uh, it was a little tricky to pull out what was, um, recorded in that five hundred thousand. Then I actually initially thought it would be so. It's all bottom line stuff anyway. So, uh, Chris, if you get the next one. Buyer services, a very small deficit of, uh, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred. That was all in, um, salaries and benefits. Police, a slight surplus of fifty-seven thousand dollars. And that can basically be attributed to the court security rebate. I believe that last year, twenty nineteen, I got, I want to say it was a hundred and sixty-four thousand. And, uh, we had budgeted somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, about ninety-seven thousand, which is what I believe we got in, uh, twenty-eight. So there was, uh, a surplus there. Conservation, a surplus of thirteen thousand, four hundred. And that's due to the fact that we actually collected. Additional, excuse me, Black Ash Creek development charges. Those development charges are applied directly to the, um. To venture that, uh, comprises most of the conservation budget. Uh, protective inspection and control, slight deficit of, uh, about twenty-nine thousand dollars. This area includes building by law enforcement, animal control and, uh, crossing guards. So the deficit in this area relates to, uh, again, this relates to the corporate, um, reorganization. As I said, some of the expenses were in other lines on the, um. The, uh, financial statements. We have, uh, uh, because the, the building department, the C B O. Now supervises by law enforcement, we can no longer, uh, recover a hundred percent of his salaries and benefits from the permit fees. Which forms part of, um. The, uh, deficit there and, um, that additional expense was actually offset by savings of about twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred. Uh, next slide, Chris? Public works, there is actually a total deficit here of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So paved roads, they were over budget, uh, sixty-nine thousand and that's, uh, related mostly to, uh, salaries and machine rental. Winter control was over a budget, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Before I go any further on this, I just want to let you know that as well with our new, um. Superintendent of Roads, Daniel Cole, some of these amounts were, um, moved from, from various. Uh, for instance, from, uh, traffic and control perhaps into the, uh, roads paved. So there were some, uh, movement within which of these, uh, section the account sat. But overall, everything is in, in, uh, public works. So, um, when we take a look at the, uh, winter control. It's totally dependent on, uh, the weather conditions. And the, the last couple of years, uh, we have been over budget. We do retain a, um. Winter control reserve, uh, for a year that, uh, we would be so far over budget that, uh, we could not possibly recover it. Um, overhead is over budget by four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, that's, uh, part of, um, towers and benefits of about sixty-six thousand. Legal expense, uh, about sixteen thousand, uh, insurance was up eighteen thousand. The revenues came in under budget of about eighty thousand, seven hundred. Um, and, uh, in particular, the transfer to reserve because of the way that we record the public works, uh, vehicles. What, what happens is technically public works rents out its vehicles to itself. So when they look at the cost of an individual. Um, uh, uh, section in there in terms of paved roads, they've got debris pickup. So they would have had a machine charge to that, but when they look at it, they can then determine if they go to, um. The, uh, open market, whether or not they're in the ballpark with the quote that they get from somebody in the open market. Or just exactly where they are. So what they do is they generate a, um. A, uh, uh, more revenue, but when you have the more revenue, it increases the amount of the transfer to reserve. So actually out of that four hundred and forty-nine, two hundred and nineteen of it is gone to the reserve. So it's, uh. It's not spent by any means, but it's in reserve. So in the next one, Chris? Conventional, uh, transit, we have surplus there of forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven. And that, uh, the major components, uh, towards that were, uh, fuel costs of, um. Thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. They were, um, because pricing gas was fluctuating a lot last year. And the janitorial contract was under budget by, uh, twelve thousand, six hundred. The next one, Chris? Affordable housing, affordable housing is a deficit of that forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirteen, uh, dollars. So these accounts are dependent on vacancy rates and required repairs. In general, for each tenant that leaves, the town is responsible to maintain the units in good tissue, good condition. So we usually have anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars in repair bills per unit. And, uh, we just can't control, um, any instances of, uh, damage. So next one, Chris? Uh, P R C, there was a deficit of, uh, in the administration accounts of seventy-eight thousand dollars. Contracted services were over budget by sixteen, which was due in part to some of the studies that were done initially. For the, uh, sunset, sunset shore repair. And some of the smaller temporary repairs to sunset point. Insurance came in over budget at, uh, thirty-two thousand. And salaries and benefits were, uh, seventeen thousand dollars over budget. We take a look at parks, the surplus there is two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. There are a lot of, uh, accounts in, uh, parks. The, and the magnitude of, uh, the surpluses generated through the parks business unit for the last few years between twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. They've all been in this range indicating that there is a budgeting problem specifically within that, uh, within that department. Um, and, uh, when we go to do the twenty twenty-one budget, we'll be spending, uh, some extra time with, uh. Parks to make sure that we're not, uh. That, that, the, what is being budgeted there is, uh, what, uh, we are actually going to spend in a year. But along with that, the revenues generated contributed about forty thousand dollars towards that, um, variance. And that's more, more than budget, uh, amounts for rentals and baseball diamond rentals, soccer rentals and mooring fees in particular. Salaries and benefits came in under budget by a hundred and fifty-three thousand. The janitorial contract was under budget by almost sixteen thousand. Repairs and maintenance to grounds were under budget by nineteen thousand. Uh, the transfer to capital was under budget by ten thousand. Tree planting was under budget by, um, sixteen thousand. And utilities were under budget by about, uh, almost fifteen thousand. So when I say that there's, um, uh, uh, a budgeting, um, problem, it, it appears, uh. To be sort of related more to the salaries and, and benefits area. Uh, recreation services surplus mostly through salaries and benefits. Facilities, a deficit of sixty-three, almost sixty-four thousand. Actual revenues here were thirty-two thousand, five hundred better than budgeted. But various repairs and maintenance accounts were. Over budget by thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and hours and benefits were fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars over benefits. Culture and events had a surplus of a hundred and forty-eight, seven. See, this is another spot that the actual revenues were a hundred and two thousand dollars better than budgeted. And those, uh, that was specific contributions from federal and provincial grants that accounted for twenty-three thousand of it. While revenues related to the Elvis festival were sixty-six thousand, six hundred above budget. And overall expenses for the department came in under budget by fifty-six thousand, five hundred. Next one, Chris? Planning is a surplus of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The vast majority of this is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And it was partly due to not awarding, uh, the official plan consultant until late. And, um, salaries and benefits were under budget by, uh, forty-two thousand, eight hundred. So that accounts for, um, where they were. And, uh, studies also were under budget by, uh, forty-five thousand. Marketing, uh, the twenty-two, five there is just made up of several over and under budget accounts. Heritage, there's a surplus there of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred. Salaries and benefits were under budget by thirty-two thousand, nine hundred. And the heritage grants were under budget by twenty-four thousand, eight hundred. When next one, Chris? The airport, very small deficit. Library, there was a surplus of almost two hundred thousand dollars. Revenues were forty-six thousand, five hundred better than budgeted due to the higher level of development charges collected and applied. Salaries and benefits were a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars under budget, which accounts for the vast. Majority of, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars. Next one, Chris? So total for all departments, um, our actual, um. Our actual rep expenditures came in at thirty-four thousand, thirty-four million, nine hundred and fifty-seven. We budgeted thirty-three, um, six hundred and sixty-seven. So we had an overall over budget of our expenses of, uh, one million, three hundred thousand. Again, the taxation revenues were, um, above what we budgeted, uh, uh, a million and fifty-seven thousand. And the ending result there was a over, an overall deficit of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Which was, uh, funded through the use of the operating contingency reserve. So in the end, we came out to zero. That's where the fourth quarter landed.
Thank you, Marjorie. Questions? Well, I guess I'll go, uh, to the public if we have any, uh, Sarah, are there still people in the gallery?
Yes, there is.
Okay, well, we'll open it and public comments then about the fourth quarter variance report.
Again, if members of the public wish to participate, please raise your hand using the tool function on the bottom of your screen or put your comment in the chat. It doesn't look like there's interest at this time for this item.
All right, council, any questions or comments on the budget, uh, the variance report? I'll start with Councilor Hamlin.
Mr. Mayor, through you to our treasurer. I see that the total. Amount that we were at variance, or words, we overspent the budget of one point two million. Half of that is public work. And most of the money in public works is for overhead, which is a pretty big. Catch-all. So I'm just wondering if, I, I know you mentioned it briefly, but I don't think I caught exactly what the overhead amount was. I was wondering if you could give us a little more information?
Through you, Your worship. The vast majority of that, um, overhead amount there is actually. The way that it's, it's due to the way that public works funds their reserve. They charge out their. Um, they charge out their vehicles and um put the the excess into a reserve so they can purchase their other vehicles uh back and forth. In in actual fact, that's uh it was a it was over budget by two hundred and nineteen, which is the vast majority of the uh overhead amounts. There were eighty thousand dollars in um less revenue there. And um, if I recall correctly, when I was looking at it, there's there's probably about another forty accounts with smaller over and underages and uh that you know, make it up. I just, when I try to do it, I try to hit the the highlights.
Okay, thank you.
Sir McLeod?
Thank you, through you, your worship, too. I think my first question goes to uh the treasurer, but my second question goes to the acting C A O. So um pardon me if this seems obtuse, but how is it that we spent sixty two thousand dollars on our airport when we don't have one anymore?
Through you, your worship, we did operate it until I believe it was um, and the deputy clerk can correct me on this, but it was this, I want to say the sixteenth of March. So there were costs up to that date. Plus, when we do the sales on it, there were um adjusting entries that were required because we um had to fill the uh tank, the gas tanks and and those types of things, so that there were expenses involved in the um the the final posing uh adjustments of the of the uh entire deal. So that's where it was.
Thank you. My second question, I believe, goes to C A O Skinner uh and through you, your worship. And this may sound a little harsh. I'm just going to look at that final number. I'm switching over the my screen. So um, we uh budgeted to spend thirty three million dollars last year, and we spent thirty four thirty three six, and we spent thirty four nine. So again, the variance, a million two on a thirty three million dollar budget. Is it unusual to have a variance of that size in an organization this size?
Sorry?
Or perhaps Marjorie, I'm not sure. Sorry.
All right, who who wants to take it?
Yes, thank you.
Treasurer or?
I can I can fill that one, worship. Um, in in terms of uh whether or not it's it's normal to have those types of things, no two municipalities are the same. None of them are. I can't guarantee you that I'm going to have uh a million uh dollars worth of supplemental tax bills this year because I, at this point in time, it's only a one point three percent growth rate. There are municipalities that have uh uh smaller municipalities, when you've got a a budget of something like seven or eight million dollars, when you're talking about tiny or or tay, it's much easier to control the spending. We're dealing with um large amounts. Our our exceptional uh item here, uh Counselor McLeod, was was the judicial inquiry. We had only budgeted one point five million dollars for it, and it just it just accelerated and ran right over top of us. Most times, we would have uh, we we would have a surplus based on any additional supplementary taxes that we have or or any savings. If if uh, for instance, in in Parks and Rec, if Wendy has a wet summer, her staff don't work, they don't, they're not cutting the grass, right? So um, or if it's a hot summer like this, they've cut the grass last week and they don't have to go back and cut it for three weeks. There's, you know, other things there, but in in general, um, where we end up is uh, it's 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 due to our growth in our our supplementary taxes. However, this year it's it's the other way around because of the judicial C A O. Do you like to add to that?
Sorry? I I think I have, thank you, and that through the chair. I think I have less perspective on the numbers than the treasurer does. However, in looking at into the total amount, it's um, it's not fantastic. We'd like to come in at zero. It's in well under five percent variance. So while the numbers themselves are not where we, you know, ideally like them to be, it it was unfortunately one of our now two in a row of unusual years. I think that um you know, Co- COVID not accepting that, an exception that this will continue to improve, so the variances will go down. And I I think it's within the realm of of normal.
Okay, great. Thank you. If I hadn't received that answer, I would have further questions. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Comey, I have you up.
Thank, thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the treasurer. Uh, thank you for your ongoing presentations and all your detailed information. I'm, my, I guess my first question is, please, I will counsel receive, you gave such a fantastic detailed breakdown, and I'm trying to make notes as fast as I can. Are you able to share some of those details with us beyond the slides?
Marjorie?
Through you, your worship, I do have some notes that I can uh, I I will provide.
Okay, I appreciate that so much. I'll tell you my particular interest if that helps. I appreciate and and clearly heard your comments uh with respect to the P R C budget. A a couple of things I did catch, and I'm going to offer them as a general comment to our C A O and uh Executive Director Culver, who presented the green initiatives. If I caught it and wrote it down correctly, I heard that we underspent on our tree planting by sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, is that correct? Yeah, so
Through through you, your worship, yes.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's a number of reasons that can happen, but I think if we're looking to tie in our our green spending and planning and initiatives, I think we definitely as a council would like to see all of that spent. I also jotted down that under P R C, they were underspent in janitorial. Is that correct?
Uh, again, through you, your worship, yes, it it uh, they were, but I think it has to do when they started the the contract with the uh the cleaning service. I think that it was a a timing thing for that. Pretty, I'm pretty sure it was because it included not just, it was the Central Park two at the Sunset Point, three maybe down there. And there was another spot that they were um cleaning as well for parks in there.
It's through through you, Mr. Mayor, I I appreciate that comment. And again, I raised that because I believe a little further down today, we're going to hear about washrooms and concerns from our residents about keeping them clean. So we want to make sure what we're hearing about underspending on janitorial. And I offer the comment that the comment about cleanliness is is not new. It's contained in our P R C uh master plan. Uh, when we go back to that, residents have long commented concern that we're doing the best we can. So I just want to make sure if they're hearing we underspent on janitorial service, that uh the council and our residents sort of understand what that means. And but I would appreciate, if possible, uh having some of those details on the P R C uh variances so that we can fully understand when we sit down at the table uh later in the fall, you know, what we need to be looking at. I'm sure our trails, our active transportation trails committee would be very interested to know how we did when it came to our trail spending as well last year. So uh through you, Mr. Mary, thank you again, and Treasurer Leonard, and we greatly appreciate any other details you have on that.
All right, any other comments, counsel? Seeing none, and then we'll move on to the next item, which is six point four Simcoe Street Pilot Project Update and patios. And we have Deputy Clerk Doll.
Hey, I hope you can hear me. I've had lots of technical issues at home today, so I've had to switch lots of devices around to get online here.
Very well. Yeah.
Good. Okay. Um, so through the chair to the committee, this is just a quick update to let you know where we're at. So we've been asked to write this quick update on the pilot for both the patios and the Simcoe Street closure. We continue to receive uh applications for restaurants in the downtown to expand their patios beyond their existing footprint. Uh, we've currently issued uh eight permits in the downtown. And you'll soon see expansions for Espresso Post and Soul Kitchen in the coming days. And there's new patios also popping up, which is great to hear. Baked and Pickled has applied for a patio. El Carbon, which is a new restaurant, uh, The Pine, which is another new restaurant, and The Crow. Uh, so they've never had a patio before, so it's kind of exciting to see. And we'll definitely activate our downtown even further. Um, as for the Simcoe Street Pilot Project, the town continues to work with all the affected businesses and individuals along Simcoe Street. Uh, this initiative was brought forward by Lowdown and BMFA back in June with their original vision uh being to close Simcoe Street from here Ontario Street to St. Paul Street uh to help draw people down Simcoe Street and explore some of the great arts and culture and dining uh located in that area. Uh, the initial request was for a four day closure. With that, um, I provided um a feedback form to all the affected parties, and we received uh some concerns back from that. Um, and they included uh disruption to delivery services and waste collection during those four days. A removal of on-street parking for some of the healthcare type businesses along there. And also access to the laneway situated beside moguls because it provides access to Gordon's Repair uh Business and as well as some of the residential apartments that are along uh that strip on here Ontario Street. Uh, so with that feedback that we received, uh staff met but met back up with Lowdown, BMFA, and Richard Lex to discuss the feedback based on the original proposal that they put forward. And uh, we came up with a bit of a compromise in providing a closure for Saturdays only to help lessen the impact on those individuals that expressed some concern. So with that, um Casey or Cassie from Lowdown uh decided that she could represent the Simcoe Street Group and provided an additional survey out to all of the affected businesses and um individuals proposing a Saturday closure for July fifteenth and July twenty fifth as potential dates. Uh, we received that feedback late last week and reviewed it. And with that feedback, we still continue to have some concern expressed with the closure of the laneway and the on-street parking along that section of uh Simcoe Street. So uh staff are proposing to move forward with the pilot project to close all of Simcoe Street for July twenty fifth. Um, with the concerns expressed, we looked at a number of options uh that we might want to consider. The first one was closing only one side of Simcoe Street along that area to allow for still flow of traffic, access to the laneway, and provide some on-street parking. Uh, the second option that we looked at was allowing access to the laneway by creating a somewhat of a um informal lane that connects the laneway to the other laneway along um Simcoe Street that goes into the Simcoe Street parking lot. And the other option was to only close Simcoe Street from St. Marie to St. Paul Street. Public Works and Engineering expressed some concern with the first two options with respect to liability and process uh processes involved in road closures. Uh, so it was agreed to move forward with the full closure, offering a reserved parking in St. Marie parking lot uh to any of the businesses that expressed concern with loss of parking. Uh, so if we do move forward with this, uh, I'll be providing notice to all the affected parties and to the contact if they have any concerns or questions. Um, if there continues to be objection to the closure for the businesses within the first block of Simcoe Street, um, staff will need to further uh reevaluate this closure and pilot project and potentially just do it in the Easterly block of uh Simcoe Street. Um, if the pilots are success, uh, we'll be looking at implementing this uh through Saturdays through the summertime. So I don't know if you have any questions with what our findings have been so far, but we hope to get this project up and running. I think it'd be really exciting and something new for the downtown. Providing on a Saturday also links it to the farmer's market when people are already downtown, it might bring more attention to Simcoe Street as well. So.
Thanks, Becky. I'm I'm gonna look to uh Clerk Thomas to see if there's anyone in the gallery that would like to speak to this.
I certainly know that there's an individual wishing to speak to that, and that is Mr. Richard Lex, so we'll allow him to speak.
Okay.
Hello, uh, counsel, can uh can I be heard?
Hi, Richard. Yep, we can hear you.
Hey, okay, thank, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Soddersen. Uh, and and I just want to quickly thank uh town staff for really all the extensive work they've done on this. I know, I'm sure it's been a lot of time involved, and in particularly the clerk's office, and and I know the deputy clerk's done a whole lot of on this. And um, and just also a quick, a quick shout out to Counselors Comey, Ham, Hamlin, and um McLeod for some of the early feedback with this idea. So Cassie and and uh from Lowdown and Susan from BMFA really presented, I think, an inspiring presentation. They went through the B I A. They were very pleased with it. Uh, and and I'm and I'm certainly, and 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 the folks here on this street are very enthusiastic about moving forward on July twenty fifth, so I'm very happy to hear that. Um, the one, the one concern I did want to speak uh to counsel about was um regarding the laneway alongside moguls. And um moguls and and let's call it the moguls and former Molly Bloom's laneway. And and we really need to think of a a good name for that, for that laneway because it deserves a name and uh, but in any case, um it's been an issue, was an issue when we had Elvis because it would be closed for about three days. And there were alternate arrangements for the folks there, some of the residential tenants and some of the businesses to um to have alternate parking in that, and it never worked and always caused a lot of complaints. And and quite frankly, it was not enforced and and people still crossed, cars were still crossing the street. If we want to create something that is sustainable, not just a one-shot uh event, we really need to look at providing continued access through that laneway from alongside the former Molly's Blooms to to the moguls um and Prime Seven Nine parking area. It's it's just not a solution to to block that laneway if we if we do this on a sort of a regular Saturday basis in the summer. And since this is a trial, I really would encourage um staff and and counsel to to give it a try, leave that laneway open and um and allow cars to cross, and it wouldn't be very many cars. There's not that many tenants. I I certainly, because we're talking about a pedestrian zone or pedestrian walkway that we're trying to create. But I'm having my hard time getting my head around uh what the objection is or what the problem is. Because every day, cars cross sidewalks, there's thousands of occasions where cars cross pedestrian ways known as sidewalks. Part of this closure would mean crossing uh St. Marie Street. So as you go from block to block, you are crossing the street as well. And you have to look out for cars. People cross here Ontario Street all the time. They they have crosswalks where they can cross. So I I, there's a, there's a lane alongside the farmer's market that has been in operation and has never closed as a result of the market there. So I do have a concern, and I know it will be a concern with some of the tenants in there to the point where this trial could fail. We don't want to see that happen, so I'd like to really have a further look at alternatives to keep that that laneway open. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. So we've duly, with staff have noted your concerns. Sarah, do we have anyone else uh who would like to speak?
Your worship, we do not have anybody else expressing interest to speak to this item. And we do have Director Slama available if there's any questions regarding that, the street closure.
Okay. Well, then I'll open it up to uh counsel. Counsel, questions or comments about the pilot project? Counselor Hamlin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to our deputy clerk. I wanted to express my thanks also for our staff about all your thinking, and I can see there's been a lot of issues uh that you're juggling. So I'm so glad that you're pursuing this and that we're going to still have um an opening. Um, I am just wondering, there were a couple of things on my mind that came up during the initial discussions around the closure. And I just wanted to ask whether they were on your radar. One was uh that the artist community organized through the Blue Mountain Foundation for the Arts wouldn't have an opportunity to set up, you know, I don't know, maybe artathon location kind of displays uh during the closure. Is that being contemplated still?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Hamlin, that is definitely part of it. So part of the closure would be allowing uh these artists or any other business for that matter to be able to provide um, you know, a display of what they do or live action painting or whatever uh in specific areas alongside along the road and the sidewalk.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. The second Okay, that's great. Thank you. The second thing was maybe allowing restaurants who don't have access to a patio space to be able to set up over there and maybe even the parking lot behind the Tremont, for example, food carts. Has that been discussed at all?
Through the chair to Counselor Hamlin, we have discussed that. There's an issue with liquor service, that they want to serve liquor because it won't extend their liquor license beyond that point. And speaking with the restaurants too, they've expressed some concern because they're already having issues with maintaining or getting staffing. And to be able to have staff at a completely different location has caused them a little bit of of a problem. We would definitely consider if someone wanted to set up for, you know, the pilot day or whatever. But those are the concerns I've heard from the restaurant owners that are not really interested in that because of the lack of staffing.
Okay, thank you. And finally, through you, Mr. Mayor. There, we also had some initial thoughts around having a portion of the farmer's market over there. And I did hear, and this isn't anything beyond, I'll say gossip, but what I heard was that when our opening of the farmer's market, there were 18 stalls and perhaps as many as 36 applicants for space. And so there may be some interest if we could make space. And again, you know, I don't know where it would be, but has, has that been on your radar at all?
Through the chair to Counselor Hamlin, I wasn't aware of that. So that's definitely something I can look at if we're looking to, you know, animate the space a little bit. That could be an opportunity for those vendors that aren't able to get into the farmer's market.
Okay, that was all my questions. Thank you very much.
Counselor Comey.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Deputy Clerk Doll. So first of all, a huge thank you to you and staff for all your hard work to get our entrepreneurs back on the street. It was a week ago today, I got to kick off the morning with the Caesar at Candice Only Caesar Bar and those business owners were absolutely delighted to be open again. So the hard work that you and staff have put forward is paying dividends to our entrepreneurs that keep our downtown thriving. So we so, so appreciate that. And, you know, as a follow-up, I'm going to offer this comment through you, Mr. Mayor, to you Deputy Clerk Doll and staff. And I'm really just citing back to staff as some of the comments that came to us in the report back in June, which was the, which was the follow-up to the recommendations by the Economic Support and Recovery Task Force. And these were staff's comments when it came to street closures. And I just want to really impart the comment that not only was it focused on economic development, right, and a way to help out our businesses with patio space, but it also spoke to improving safety by reducing interactions between traffic and people. And this one of particular importance, to promote outdoor physical activity and active transportation. So the comment I'm offering is, I understand there's a huge economic element to what we're doing. It is hugely important. But our residents have so asked for this and are so looking forward to an opportunity for expanded outdoor space and active transportation options. So when we're weighing all the comments and feedback we're getting, I just hope staff remembers its own comments and all the feedback we've heard from our public about how much they would look forward to some street space to spread out and, and use additional cycling and pedestrian space. And that's my comment.
Thanks Deputy Clerk. And we'll look forward to the July 25 pilot project and we got Fire Chief Par over there with his hand up. Go ahead, Fire Chief.
Through you, your worship, just to back up some of this that we have to keep in mind that we're still under emergency declaration. And the Civil Protection and Prevention Act eliminates and constricts gathering of of certain sized crowds or events. And we have to watch how we promote this and how many people gather at this, in this kind. So Deputy Clerk Doll was trying to facilitate businesses that exist to be able to operate in an area that they, they would normally be in. And we've found that was, was where we tried to lead this being on the committee. So again, there had to be a lot of concern and very cautious of how we do the street opening until the government decides to relax some of the emergency orders at this time.
Thank you, Chief, for bringing that to our attention. And certainly with the announcement from the Health Unit yesterday. They be continued to be under the threat and, and we're looking at PPE and making sure with social distancing and when we can have social distancing that we're wearing masks. And my understanding is at the farmer's market, they are wearing masks as part of the, of that process. So we'll have to look at that. Are there any other questions or comments, council? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Becky, for that report and that update. And your reception was excellent. 6.5, the digital modernization update. And we have Director Ridlow. Martin?
Good evening again. I am actually going to ask Catherine to join me as well. We are co-leading this project. And Catherine, of course, is from Public Works and it's a really neat partnership that we're putting in place. Thank you for the first slide. As I noted, this is something that was one of the task force's recommendations. And specifically, it actually brings together several disparate projects that had been in the works over the course of several months. And we realized there was an opportunity to actually pull them together under what we're calling the Main Street Modernization Project with the vision of being a small town sustainability innovator by using technology to help get people walking, biking, browsing and shopping downtown Collingwood more. As many of you are aware, we've had the Collingwood Pilot Project prior that related to the sun pumps. We see this as a potential next Collingwood Pilot Project initiative because of its ability to help not only with infrastructure improvements, but importantly, to create a stronger, more prominent and easier to use digital discovery platform for the downtown. We've been working on this project together with the BIA because it has significant benefits, I think, for all of us. Let me pass it over to Catherine right now for the next slide.
Thank you, Martin. So with respect to the project purpose, the collective elements of this project promote three objectives within the town strategic plan. The first one we have here is the public connections to a revitalized waterfront, including continuation of the wayfinding signage. And so this project, we want to help ensure that visitors know that they can park in the town and then transition to walking or some other active transportation option to go into the downtown Collingwood and to the harbor as well. Second objective is supporting and managing growth and prosperity, including encouraging tourism. There are elements within this project that will educate and inform visitors and residents about local attractions, events and businesses. And it aligns with the funding downtown improvements and facilities along the waterfront that is called out in this, underneath this objective. And the third objective is enhancing community and wellbeing, including enabling and encouraging active transportation and electric vehicles and thereby supporting climate change mitigation. So we're establishing and identifying year-round active transportation routes throughout the community. Often when we're thinking of active transportation, especially in the winter, we're thinking more about the, about the trails around town. And as beautiful as they are, we have some wonderful discovery walks through the downtown core and we wish to draw more attention to them as well. And you can do the self-guided tours in the winter, summer, fall or spring at your own, at your own demand. Next slide, please. So this project is divided into two complementary components. One is we call the wayfinding improvement. It involves vehicular signage, which is continuation of the wayfinding signage plan that was implemented with Phase One last year. Phase One drew attention to our, included drawing attention to the parking lots within town. And also under the wayfinding improvement, we have something that we're calling the pedestrian experience finding. This has physical features that we will have at discovery hubs around town. And there'll also be this digital element that Martin alluded to earlier and he'll go into more detail in a moment. There is also a component called